Will now be recorded.
I'm going to call the meeting to order. And I will read the obligatory readings. On March 14th, 2020, in response to COVID pandemic and an effort to reduce the risk of transmission by virtue of attendance at public meetings, Governor Lamont suspended in-person open meeting requirements and permits conducting public meetings remotely by conference called video conferencing or other technology. Copy of the order is available on the town of Monroe's website. Accordingly, Monroe selected GoToMeeting as preferred technology. This technology will permit only 250 members of the public to participate in real time. It is highly recommended that any interested participant download and utilize GoToMeeting software, which is available at the link sent out on the agenda. Each meeting will have a unique participation code, phone number, or live link. Please be sure you're at the right meeting. Any member of the public who desires to submit written information relative to the business set forth on the agenda may do so up to one hour in advance of the meeting via electronic mail and to address set forth on the meeting agenda. Notice is hereby given that this remote electronic public meeting shall, one, permit the public to view or listen anonymously. And when permitted, participate in real time. Number two, to be recorded and posted to the town's website within seven days. And number three, be made available to the public within a reasonable time in town hall or upon written request. In addition to standard parliamentary procedures as outlined on this agenda, the following special rules shall apply. Please mute your microphone so as to reduce background noise at any time you are not speaking. Prior to speaking and on each occasion, each speaker shall clearly state their name and title for the record. The use of the chat feature is prohibited. Notice is hereby given that only 250 participants may access this remote meeting at any one time. Access is granted on a first come, first served basis. While it's not anticipated that tonight, this participation limit will be exceeded if such occurs, being will be adjourned or conducted at a later date. All right, so let's see. Bruno is not here. Well, I'll call the roll. Please answer when you hear your name. Ryan Condon, Secretary. Leo Ambrosi.
Here.
Leon is here. Rob Westland.
Present.
Ron Schneider.
I am here.
Dominic Anici. Rick Schultz, Town Planner.
Present.
William Agresta, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Here.
Barbara Schellenberg, Special Land Use Council. Georgia Cantores, Meeting Moderator.
Here.
Sarah Stroud, Recording Secretary. So I think we, well, we need to seat one of the alternates, correct?
I think Bruno's, I thought I saw Bruno shine in.
I'm here.
Bruno's here. So yeah, you can seat one alternate.
Let's see, one alternate to make five.
And that'd be Robert.
Not sure.
Robert.
Got it.
All right, Robert, you're seated.
Actually, I have a quick.
What's that, Bruno?
Isn't Robert the full seat now or no?
No, not until he's confirmed, sworn in and all of that. So next, you don't. On the agenda is general public participation. I'm going to read you the rules for general public participation. This goes for public participation during the public hearings as well. The commission welcomes public participation and asks that speakers please limit their comments. Speakers are requested to first state their name and address for the record. Speakers may offer objective comments about planning and zoning matters and land use related concerns that should be brought to the commission's attention. The commission will not permit any expression of personal complaints or defamatory comments about the commission. Members of the Planning and Zoning Department are against any person connected with the town of Monroe or any other individual, firm, or corporation. Speakers are not to comment on any suggested, proposed, or pending application before the commission, except a public hearing, which will be announced separately later in this meeting. No discussion is permitted by any party of any matters related to pending or ongoing litigation. The Chair has a discretion to limit comment time. Generally, three minutes per speaker is allowed. Chair may allow additional time. The statements are always welcome and are always provided to the Planning, Zoning, Commission members. Immediate replies to questions and concerns should not be expected and will be provided at the discretion of the commission. First item on the public hearing agenda is SCP 2020-02, File Number 1622A. 556 Pepper Street, I2 District. This is a special exception permit. Site development plan application for conversion of a portion of an existing non-conforming single-family home used used to a permitted landscaping business, including related office, driveway, parking, fencing, and dumpster improvements. Who do we have tonight that would like to present SCP 2020-02?
Caesar, you're up.
Good evening. Turn of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Caesar Rios, researcher for the 556 Pepper Street, Monroe, Connecticut, 06468. I'm up to the applicant of the SFP application. Should I send my?
Yeah, just give us, give us an overview of what, where, what you have, where you are, what's done, what, and what you're planning to do.
Very well.
Yep, I'm putting this site plan up for you, Caesar.
Thank you. So, um, business that I run is a landscaper and a home maintenance. I have a few equipments. Part of the application is the necessity that I have through my business is to park those equipments. Part of them are dumpsters. And another part of the equipment is a power washer machine. That is basically will be parked to the backyard on the driveway. Also, the intention of the property is to use as my residency, my family and I, and to have a administration office at the same property. The place where the drawing shows that is very well specified, where the dumpster is going to be located and will be parked is pretty much the use that I intended on for the driveway. Also, I'd like to say that the whole, the house has a drain system that it shows on the drawing that has a has a manhole. And it's basically a drainage system for the garters of the house. In really good working order. Have any type of flooding whatsoever. And and also I'd like to say the tools and part of my hand tools and equipment that I needed in my business to work is storage at the two-car garage under the office that I intended to use to administer my office. Any, any question?
Well, thank you, Mr. Rios. I'm going to first go to the public to see if there are any questions. First, I'd like to ask the public if there are any general comments about this application. Hearing none, then I would like to ask members of the public if there are any comments in favor of this application. Hearing none, I'd like to ask members of the public if there are any comments in opposition to this application. Hearing none, then I'd like to call the commission. I will call your names if you have any comments or questions about the application. Bruno Maiini.
No questions.
Brian Condon.
No questions.
Leon Ambrosi. Yes, is the applicant going to pave the driveway? Miss, Mr. Rios, can, you can answer that question, please.
Sure, can you repeat the question, please?
You plan on paving the driveway and doing the, once there are regulations you need to pave, you can't have, you can't have gravel driveway.
Okay. To answer the question.
Some kind of concrete pads for your, your storage. Do you have any, are you planning on doing that?
To answer the question, sir. I'd like to say that I really appreciate all the help that I get from the committee to all the time when I've been trying to comply with the commission at the time when I started this application. And I have to say that I'm, I'm exhausted by saving on doing all of this processing. And to answer the question, if it's in my plan to pave that, it's gonna be, not gonna be able to afford unless at the moment. Re, I said this gravel in in a matter that it hold a, it's a big truck, pretty much weighed, I think, almost 10,000 pounds. And the only reason that the gravel driveway, I said that the driveway gravel is chose to park the equipments. It's, that is a washer and, and four dumpsters. It's, it's, it's not my, it's in, to me, I don't need it to be paved. I understand that there is some regulation that need to be paved. But the natural look of the gravel, wait, I set it up this driveway. It's natural drain, the water, or every time is is naturally set it up, basically. Is, is hard to say right now if, or tell you that and answer that question and say, yes, I mean, if it's, yes, I can, I can just pave the driveway. It's a, it's a big driveway and it's not on my plan to pave, to answer the question, sir.
Problem is, is that the, the commission would have to give you a waiver on that. We usually don't give waivers on that. And so I was wondering if you're willing to do that as part of the approval. And then we can deliberate on it and see what we want to do with it. But I just wanted to let you know that that would be something that we would have to waive. Is that true, Will?
Yes, and you can only waive it in the parameters in which the zoning regulations provide for.
So that's why I was, I was asking that question, if you're willing under the approval to pave the driveway.
In the beginning, I, yeah, I made the promise that I wanted to comply with the, with the commission and yes, I wanted to do whatever is required.
All right, so you're, so then, I just wanted to make sure that you were clear on that because I just didn't want to, want to put an extra expense on you that, that you said that you couldn't afford. But I wanted to make sure that in order, if, whichever way it goes, if we require you to pave the driveway, you're willing to do that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I have. Rob Westland.
Or Mr. Rios, oh, is there any plan of storing any materials on-site such as mulch, stone, or any cleanup debris?
No. Any, any? No, to answer the question is no, just, just to park the truck, one working van, and the four dumpster, that's what it's basically.
Good. What are your typical hours of operation?
Eight to four.
Eight to four, okay. And so were you guys going to be repairing any equipment on-site, any of the, the landscape equipment?
Um, no, I'm not a mechanic, so I'm not, no.
Okay, thank you.
Main, maintenance of the truck goes to the mechanic. The washer also goes to the maintenance supplier. Yeah, no reason for me to, to do any mechanic repair.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rios, the dumpsters that you're going to be storing there, will they be empty?
That's correct, sir. Yeah, the only intention is to park the dumpster. The way I run the business is when any type of waste or demolition work or anything that I need to put it into the dumpster, I take it to the work site. And then we use a transfer station in Bridgeport to dump any waste. And the truck and the dumpster get to the, to the property just to be parked.
Okay, because normally, we require a cement pad to go under a dumpster, but I'm not sure if that's for a dumpster that's full or whether that applies to your situation. But the fact that it should be paved, like Commissioner Ambrosi had mentioned, is true. That is a fairly strict rule, regulation in Monroe. So, um, you should probably think about that. We're not going to be able to close the hearing tonight because you need to have an inland and wetlands certificate before we can close the hearing. They have to, you have to finish with them first. I understand you are, you have an application to inland wetlands, correct?
That's correct. And our last meeting, last week, I thought, I understand that they kind of waiting on planning and assuming the commission to for the decision. And one of the decision is, I think, if I'm not wrong, is about if the driveway need to be paved or not. The inland said that they kind of prefer the natural look of the gravel. Reason why the intention of the, the purpose of the driveway is just to park the dumpster and the equipment. So that's, that's basically how I understand, but I can be wrong. It's probably when, as you said, you need to have there to finish and, and in order for you, for your part of the commission to close this application.
Right. So, Rick, are you familiar with how far inland wetlands has gotten with this?
Yes, it's continued for their next meeting. So I will convey to the wetlands agent that the commission's position is for pavement.
Okay, then, Mr. Rios, we'll have to continue this until our next regular meeting. And hopefully, staff can talk to you more about the paving requirements.
Mr. Chairman, this is Will Agresta. There are two memos, one from myself and one from the town engineer. I'm assuming you're going to want Mr. Rios to address those comments and make a reply.
Yes, I think the paving is the, is the major obstacle at this point. I know there are some other minor comments, but are there any other comments you'd like to add, Mr. Agresta?
I don't want to add any more than what I already have in the record, which, you know, again, I think normal processes should respond with revisions and, or address in narrative what he feels is satisfying, the various comments from the both of us. But I agree, the paving is the larger of the issues. And when, Mr. Rios, when you look at the parking table that I provided in the memo for you to fill in, the area that you should include, if you're going to use the garage basement, the garage is what you're using for storage?
That's correct.
Yeah, so when you figure out the square footage of, of the office upstairs, also include the garage in that number. And if you need help during the week doing that, you can certainly call me.
Very well, I will do. Thank you, sir.
Will, did he get a copy of the, of your comments and of the engineer's comments?
I believe so. Did you get them, Caesar?
I do, I do, I do get on an email, yes.
All right, you're willing to address that with the town staff?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we'll just take it up at the next meeting and.
Well, we would need a resubmission by next Tuesday to get it on the next meeting. When is, we're not sure when, Rick, do you know when Wetlands meets again?
It's the 9th and the 22nd.
So, nine, okay. So that doesn't give him a lot of time, so.
Do you have the paving done?
No, not to have the paving done, to have your responses. Technically, you have to add the responses, revisions to the, to comments and stuff a week in advance of the next meeting, which would be, or a few days more than a week, which would be Tuesday, the 8th. But if you don't meet with Wetlands until 9th, it's kind of hard for you to do a full, full revision or full response without knowing where Wetlands is going. So I'm not sure if we're gonna, we're gonna make it for the 17th. So I think you should go to your Wetlands on the 9th. Hopefully, you'll resolve some issues with the Wetlands and target the October 1st meeting, which means you'd be addressing the town engineer and the planning and zoning comment memos, as well as the discussion tonight by the 22nd of September. So we would continue this to October 1st. If that makes sense to everybody.
Okay, Mr. Rios. So, Mr. Rios, just look over the comments, all of them, and then talk to Will and tell him, you know, what you're willing to do to address the comments. And then we'll go over everything at the next meeting, which would be in October.
Very well.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any other questions of us tonight? Okay, then we'll continue that.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda. Rick, is this still, has there been any movement on this next item?
We received a continuation, a postponement, I mean, to September 17th.
Okay. So that's RIA 2020-02, File Number 1009E, B1 MU District text amendment that will be postponed to, when was that, the next meeting?
Yeah, we said September 17th.
September 17th.
Caesar.
Yes, sir.
Unless you want, unless you want to pay, stay on the meeting, that's up to you. But we're not going to do anything more with your application tonight.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for a site development plan, SDP 2020-01, File Number 139, 64 Cambridge Drive and 4 Independence Drive in I2 District. This is a site development plan application proposing three, three phases over a period of 10 years of site-related activity, including construction of a one-story office building measuring 2,300 square feet with associated grading, parking, site utilities, homeowners management improvements for current and future, not yet proposed site development, and extensive land filling of approximately 1.3 million cubic yards of material involving approximately 75,575 truck trips based on 24 tons per truck to restore an unauthorized quarry. This is Astro Land Holdings LLC and Spacey Land Holdings LLC. So who do we have to present?
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, I just want to notice, we did do a legal notice. And that was published in Voices on August 19th and Wednesday, August 26th, which essentially said what you, what you just said. And there are a series of exhibits. Bear one, two seconds.
All right, why don't you present the exhibits then?
So the exhibits include an application materials, project narrative, waiver requests related to grading activities, a bond estimate form, engineering report, traffic report, wetland and vernal pool assessment, site plans. In addition to that, we've received a pleading for intervention by a neighbor. There is also ART, planning and zoning comment memo, town engineer ART comment memo. There is an independent report from the Southwest Conservation District that was engaged by the Inland Wilderness Commission that was submitted to our file. There also was a letter from Alta Environmental submitted to our file and I believe a letter from a group called REMA. That's the, the current exhibits.
Thank you, Mr. Agresta.
And I, oh, we, Kevin, did we get the notices beforehand?
Yeah, we submitted the green cards to the office.
So we have those on cloud. Okay, go ahead, Kevin.
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name's Kevin Solee. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solee Engineering. Office is located at 501 Main Street here in Monroe. With me here this evening is Arnold Karp, who's a member of the LLC who owns the properties, and also Patricia Sullivan, who is our land use counsel. I'm going to hand it over to Arnold, just to kind of introduce himself. I think he may have spoken to the commission on an informal basis, maybe back in June of last year. But he's obviously here, excited to talk to the commission about this application and, you know, hopefully to keep up the resolution of that. So I'll go over to Arnold.
Good evening, commissioners. I appreciate your time and I think we have a very good application this evening. I'm the managing member of Astro and Basely LLC that are the owners of the subject properties. I'm here, of course, with my team of professionals to move this project forward. As I have previously stated, we did not buy the, this piece of property to be in the aggregate business, but to restore these properties so that we can turn them into commercial and as the commission is well aware, we purchased these properties in May of 2019 and we've been looking for a way to get these difficult pieces of property back onto the town of Monroe's past basis as a worthwhile usage. I think we have answered a lot of the questions and are here this evening to answer the balance of those questions. So I will let Kevin proceed. We will, of course, interject as we need to, but I look forward to making a clear and comprehensive proposal that will help move this property forward.
Thanks, Arnold. Again, Kevin Solee for the record. Would it be possible to make me a presenter so I could share my screen and put on a presentation for the, for the commission?
You got it, Kevin, coming to you.
Good, thanks, Georgia.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we are here tonight to talk about a proposed site development and restoration application for 64 Cambridge Drive and 4 Independence Drive in Monroe. So just to orient everyone, let's see. Here we go. So the subject site's located in the heart of the Pepper Street Business Park. So this is an area of the town of Monroe. Route 25 runs north-south along the western side of the town and this site's located off of the northern entrance to Pepper Street. So the site's, just to orient everyone a little bit more, Route 25, Pepper Street, intersection Route 25 here. This site's accessed through Cambridge Drive, which is the start of the Pepper Street Business Park. And this is kind of, this is, the site's been subject to several approvals over the past 15 years. The site itself is comprised of two parcels. 64 Cambridge Drive is a larger piece of property along the southern edge of the development site. It's approximately 57.9 acres. 4 Independence Drive is located along the northern edge of the site. You can see Independence Drive runs along this northern frontage on the site's 4 Independence Drive and that's about 18.9 acres. The site itself has been subject to many land use approvals and I'm just going to run through some of that history. In 2006, the project was approved for the construction of two large industrial buildings. Site work commenced on the property based on this approval and excavation commenced. It's been established and presented at multiple boards and commissions. The overall extent and limit and of activity on the property exceeded what was approved as part of that submission, part of that approval, which has prompted a number of different responses over the years and interactions with the commission and the former landowner. Just to point out again, and I'm sorry if I didn't bring it up at the beginning, but, but Mr. Karp acquired this property in May of 2019. All the activity on the site that was kind of done in accordance with this site plan approval from 2006, which exceeded the limits, was completed and conducted by the prior owner. And, and all of Mr. Karp's activities on the property since acquiring in 2019 had tried to be more restorative in nature to try to get this property back closer to the things that were approved and to get it back into a more productive part of the community. In 2016, there was approval from both the Inland Wilderness Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission to modify a portion of the property, the lower edge of 64 Cambridge Drive. The original approval for the business park included Cambridge Drive extending all the way into the property in this location here. The section four re-subdivision, which was approved in 2016, pulled the end of that road further south, created a cul-de-sac kind of in front of 50 Cambridge, which is Axle Plastics here, and then permitted the construction of a formal paved driveway into the site, the installation of some utilities into the site, and then some water quality basins here. That permit has been transferred to the new owners of the property. A pre-construction meeting had been held with the prior owner. Another pre-construction meeting has been held with the new owner so that this work is still ongoing on the property. It's still covered under a valid permit and this activity is, is ongoing, the construction of this. Included in that section four of re-subdivision approval included some wetland mitigation and enhancement along the wetland edge and even interior to the property in this location here, which I'm going to talk about in a little bit more detail as we get further into the presentation. So that's some of the history on the property. And subsequent to our, the current property owner and our client acquiring the property in May of last year, we immediately, or he immediately engaged us to, to get back involved in the property. We had worked on it for several years, hadn't worked on it in a period of time, probably from, you know, the end of 18, 2018 up until back May or June of 2019. And we immediately came in to meet with staff. We wanted to meet with, with staff. We met with the town attorney to talk about the property itself, the condition of the property, and how to get this property back to a more productive, productive, commercial piece of property in the town of Monroe. We had an informal discussion, I believe, with the Planning and Zoning Commission to introduce the new owner, talk about a path forward, how we could address this. We were engaged with staff and the commission. We were asked to go to the Regulation Subcommittee to talk about possibly considering some changes to the zoning regulations to deal with the uniqueness of the property. We had several meetings with the Regulation Subcommittee. We had worked and refined some zoning language that, that we wanted to use to kind of best, best suit the property's size, get it to be productive. And unfortunately, those conversations were halted and we weren't really given an opportunity to kind of finish those discussions where they started. On the same time, in November of last year, the Monroe Inland Wetlands Commission issued a notice of violation on the property for disturbances that kind of took place as part of the previous approval. As soon as we received that notice of violation, we went and met with the Wetlands Commission. We then conducted a comprehensive and exhaustive analysis of the property to kind of really understand the condition that it stood at that time and develop a plan and a program to restore the site, to respond to the wetland violation and to kind of, again, get this property back to be something that can be more productive for the community. As part of that, you know, there are, what we observed was that there's no, there had been no direct wetland impact on the property. However, the site itself is bound with a wetland corridor and some vernal pool along the western edge, which is at a lower elevation, kind of down through here. And then along the eastern edge, there were also some forested wetlands with some embedded cryptic vernal pools up at a higher elevation. So that's in this location here. So, so the site itself, as I showed previously, was originally approved for extensive earthwork operations associated with the construction of two buildings, which did allow for removal of material through here. But obviously, as I stated, the depth of the excavation exceeded what was approved. And it also, the horizontal limits expanded upon what was approved. So as part of our analysis in response to the wetland violation, we came up with a plan to develop the site and to restore the property so that we could address the indirect wetland impact that took place on the property, specifically and primarily involved in the easterly wetland corridor in this location here. So that proposal essentially includes some extensive earthwork on the property. We proposed a office building up towards the front of the property and then the import of material to rehydrate and to restore the watershed for this easterly wetland system. And that was the primary goal identified in our application with Wetlands. I, I will say that we've had several meetings with the Wetlands Commission. I think they've actually been, been very successful. They had a independent third party, the Southwest Conservation District, review our application. Their report that came back actually concurred with our primary recommendation that the grading activities on this property to restore and rehydrate the watershed associated with that easterly wetland system is the most appropriate way to address the impacts caused by the prior owner. And there were some additional comments which came through, which we're actually actively working on. The applicant and our team, we've engaged a hydrogeologist to work on addressing and evaluating the groundwater patterns and flows and what any potential impacts could be caused from this. And we've also engaged a licensed environmental professional, who's actually conducted independent testing of material, representative materials across the property in addition to the groundwater, the groundwater, which has been, which collects towards the northern end of the property as well. And thankfully, we've been able to secure testing results which indicate that all of this material is clean and that all protocols and procedures and policies that are put in, that have been in place on this property have protected against any potential environmental impact or environmental harm. I will say that there is a lot of misinformation out there and there is a lot of questions and concerns and allegations being raised by a budding property owner. I'm sure you'll hear from their professionals this evening as there is an intervention petition filed on part of this application. I just want to point out for the record that since this site activity started in 2006, the site has been covered under two general permits with the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. There's a general permit for stormwater discharge from commercial activities and there's also a general permit for stormwater discharge from industrial activities. As part of the concern from some of the concerned, from a concerned neighbor, there have been constant and repeated complaints filed with the DEEP. The DEEP had sent out representatives from the Stormwater Quality Division, the Air Quality Division, and the Division of Solid Waste. All three departments have come after the site, inspected the site, and determined that there was no, no action required. There was nothing that indicated or identified any causes of concerns for them that would require any kind of action from DEEP. Additionally, they also called the Aquarian, the water company, they own property to the, to the south, repeatedly called the CEO until a very frantic and frazzled inspector came out to the property. They walked the property with members of our staff and again, concurred and concluded that there was no activity on this property that warranted any further follow-up or any, any potential concerns regarding that as well. So I wanted to kind of get some of that stuff out there to kind of paint a better picture because we honestly feel and believe that our application truly is the best way to move this project forward. We believe it addresses an issue that exists that both the property owner and I think the town wants to get resolved so that these properties can be positive, contributing, commercial pieces of property, industrial property to the, to the commercial tax base in the community. And we feel our application really does enable us to move this property forward in the right direction. So so from a proposed site plan application, we are proposing, I will say, our, our plan set and our submission materials are extensive. We have, I'm sorry, there's a lot of feedback on my end. Is everyone muted?
Georgia, can you mute the callers?
It's actually coming from Mr. Karp, just so he's aware. That's why I keep turning him off. But go ahead, Kevin, thank you.
Sorry about that. Sorry, Arnold. So our proposed application is a site development plan application. We are proposing the construction of a 2,360-square-foot office building with 10 parking spaces and grading and restoration of the balance of the property. Our proposed site plan is located at the southern reach, so right when you come in from Cambridge Drive. We propose the building and associated parking adjacent to some stormwater quality basins, which have been designed to actually accommodate, accommodate not only this restoration activity, but also potential future industrial activity for the property. We have a extensive grading plan and, and as I think has been indicated, our plan proposes to essentially remove a lot of the stockpiles along the front portion of the site to prepare this for a future industrial development and then an extensive import and earthwork activities towards the rear of the site to, again, to restore the site, to fill the over-excavated portion of the property and to restore the watersheds that contribute to this easterly wetland system. When we first started to look at this and we wanted to understand the indirect wetland impacts and visit these, these wetlands, there are, there are kind of two large wetland systems. The westerlymost wetland system actually drains from south to north and continues and feeds into the Grapevine Swamp, north of the property on 36 Timothy Hill Road. And then there's a, there was a small cryptic vernal pool located here at one point. And then the easterly wetland edge, which actually is partially on our property, partially on the property to the east of us, actually drains from north to south and feeds into the upper reaches of the west branch of the Paquonic. So this is actually kind of like the head water, the start of that watershed as it drains south. So as part of our wetlands assessment and evaluation, what we determined was, was the watershed, the contributing watershed, which basically fed the hydraulic activities within the sweatlands, has been considerably reduced from former activities. So what we did is we actually went back and we looked at what the watershed was and the contributing watershed to this wetland system prior to any site disturbance. So this, this represents the topography on this property before any activity took place. And there was approximately 9.7 acres of watershed which drained to the east, which kind of fed this easterly wetland system. We then went back and looked at the approved plan in 2006. That plan, too far, that plan, again, this was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. At the time, there was no activity within a regulated area in accordance with the wetland regulations at the time. So staff and the wetlands agent actually wrote a letter saying that Wetlands approval was not required. So this moved forward through an approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals. This actually approved to reduce that contributing watershed to just over five acres, which is a considerable reduction. But then we looked at what the contributing watershed is today. And in 2014, as part of the permit process that ended up with the And in 2014, as part of the permit process that ended up with the re-subdivision of section four, we looked at what the watershed was then, and then we looked at what the watershed is today. And that watershed feeding these wetlands has been reduced to just over two acres. So this system was formerly fed with over nine acres of watershed and been reduced to two acres. And when we did, when Bill Kenny, our soil scientist, took an exhaustive look at this, they saw, they didn't see evidence of vernal pool elegant species here. And it's been our conclusion that rehydrating this wetland will, will enable for that to be restored. The functions and the values of that, of that wetland system will offer that to be restored through the activity of importing material, regrading this, and restoring that watershed. And that analysis is really what fueled and directed our proposed grading plan so we could actually provide that same comparable watershed to feed these wetland systems. And our current plan has been able to increase that, that contributing watershed to over eight acres. I will say, so we have, we've been before wetlands for quite a few months at this time. We've received comments from the wetlands agent and the town engineer. We also just, this past week, received additional comments from the town engineer, which included some additional planning and zoning considerations. And we also received comments from the planning and zoning administrator, Mr. Agresta. We also received the report from the Southwest Conservation District and we've received some memos prepared by the consultants engaged by the intervenor. We know this hearing is going to stay open. We have a wetlands hearing scheduled again for next Wednesday. And we, we've been kind of trying to assemble and receive all of these different comments from these various sources so that we can prepare one comprehensive response and revise our proposed site plans and grading plans, et cetera, in response to those comments received to date. So what I'm presenting to you this evening is representative of the submission that was made to all the commissions. However, I will be talking about some changes that we are making to address a lot of the concerns. So as I said, our overall grading plan reflects the grading of the front portion of the site, the grading of a larger pad towards, towards the north end of the site to restore this watershed. And as part of our submission materials, we provided extensive sections to kind of show the severity of the fill, the comparison of the existing grades and our proposed grades so that the commission could understand what we're proposing to do from an earthwork standpoint. And one of the sections, section I, which is in this location here along the northern edge of the site, representative of the area where we're proposing our largest fill, is shown here. So our goal is to, this shows the existing topography of the property. You can see this is the wetland edge, this is the limit of the vernal pool which had been identified, and this is the limit of disturbance. And you can see that the grades come up and then material was removed and creates a, you know, a face of the earthwork operation, the excavation operation. We were simply proposing to kind of maintain and extend that slope up to create a level pad that would, you know, create the northern area to be developed in the future for other commercial activities, but also establishes a hard edge and restores the vernal pool envelope and allows for that hydrology to be refed. As part of our permitting process to date, we are going to be providing revised plans, which reduces the height of this pad towards the north. We had it around 480, 482. We're going to be reducing that as much as we can, but we still obviously want to make sure that we're able to still shed that water towards this wetland, towards this vernal pool. So we're probably going to be coming around about 460, 465. And we'll be providing revised plans in formal response to comments to not only the Wetlands Commission but also this commission as well. So our overall stormwater management plan has been designed in accordance with the 2004 Water Quality Manual. We have received comments from, from Scott, the town engineer, and we're able to certainly address and respond to all of his comments regarding the proposed stormwater design. The bases along the southern edge have been designed in size to accommodate the future development of this parcel. And then we can address all of his concerns and comments that he's raised to date. Additionally, as I mentioned before, we have engaged a hydrogeologist to also opine on the groundwater patterns, groundwater flows, and to ensure that our proposal and our proposed grading activities will not have any adverse impact on groundwater flows or quality or anything like that. We have a proposed utility plan for the proposed office building as part of the section four approval that also included stubbing utilities through the site to approximately this location here. We're looking to pick up those utilities, continue them underground to service the proposed office building. We also did testing with the mineral health department to provide for a septic system to accommodate this building on this location here. We received some comments as part of the Southwest Conservation District regarding that and we're actually, we've made some adjustments so that there's no issue or concern with that. And we've also reached out to the health department to make sure that they issue comments to this commission verifying that our proposal does comply, does in fact comply with the health code and the septic system requirements. We have an extensive landscape plan included in our application materials. It's, you know, we kind of focused in on two, two distinct features. Obviously, we have landscaping in and around our proposed building in accordance with the zoning regulations, but we've also provided and focused on wetland plantings along the existing wetland buffer edges. This plan actually shows some of the wetland enhancement and mitigation plantings which were approved as part of that section four re-subdivision. Those will still take place. And then we have some additional plantings around the basin, the expanded basin here and plantings, we'll actually be adding some supplemental plantings around some of the stormwater basins. Back to the overall, we also provided plantings around the municipal basin to the northwest corner of the site and extensive plantings within the vernal pool envelope, the restored slope along this wetland edge. There was also a, as part of the construction for a project on 36 Timothy Hill, there was a wetland crossing put in as part of our application. We're going to be removing that and restoring that and adding some additional plantings in there to address comments from the Southwest Conservation District. And just to, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go through in detail comments received to staff as of yet in this presentation, but I will be touching on some big picture things that we're going to be able to respond to. I know Mr. Agresta requested we provide some phasing of when the landscaping will be completed and that's something we're going to be able to provide for him as part of our response to comments. We also included a lighting plan for our project. Primarily, we're only just providing lighting through the installation of building mounted wall packs around the proposed building to, you know, so we have adequate lighting around the building. But again, this isn't an area where we would have a lot of traffic or provide any lighting along the drive or anything like that, which is consistent with the balance of the park and the site itself. One of the biggest components of our application is our soil erosion and sediment control phasing plan. When we first looked at this and looked at the overall extent and requirements associated with, with grading this site, we knew that we needed to provide sufficient detail for this commission to understand how the operation would take place, how it would be managed, and how there'd be distinct phases for the work to be completed. So we have a three-phased soil erosion sediment control plan which submitted as part of our application.
Where are they going to get the septic system?
I'll get to that later, but I think, I think I told you where the septic system was going, whomever that was. So our, our phase one of our plan is focused on removing a lot of the stockpile materials towards the southern end of the site, the construction and installation of the stormwater quality basins along the southern edge of the site, and the beginning of the fill towards the northern end of the property. Phase one is expected to be about 210,000 cubic yards of fill. The duration would be one to two years. And again, primarily focusing on removing these stockpiles, preparing this, this portion of the site to accommodate future developments so we can market this for future development and then fill towards the rear. Included in our application materials is a detailed plan in how the material would come in. We've identified and located a series of bins which would be used to, as material comes in, the material would be separated, inspected, tested, and processed prior to be placed in the hole. I want to talk about this for a few minutes. We requested a couple waivers, which I'm going to talk through in a little bit more detail. One of those was the ability to process material and place it, in order to place it in the hole. Our application proposes the import of material. There is, we are not proposing to process and remove material from the property. We understand the Planning and Zoning Commission has no mechanism to allow us to do that at this point. We are simply looking for approval to import material and place that material, compact that material into the site so we can restore those watersheds and we can provide this final grading. As part of our application materials, we have provided a material intake protocol, which provides detailed information on how material is to come to the site and what material would be allowed to come to the site. We are proposing that only clean fill, that meets the definition of clean fill in accordance with the DEEP requirements, would be allowed to come on the property. In addition to that, the protocol, material intake protocol includes a number of other testing parameters. It includes a requirement that every load is visually inspected by the operators on the facility. It requires a certificate of conformance that the material is, is certified clean fill in accordance with DEEP requirements, many of which would require additional testing prior to the material even coming onto the property. And then an additional QAQC parameters which would provide for random sampling of material brought onto the property at a, at an established interval so that there's an additional, you know, QAQC measure in place to ensure that no environmentally contaminated material can come on this property to be placed in the hole to pose any environmental risk to the property, to the groundwater, to any of the sensitive areas surrounding the property. As I said before, there are all kinds of, there's all kinds of misinformation out there. There's been allegations made that contaminated materials have been coming on the property for years. There's a letter from a consultant hired by the intervenor which, which makes a claim that possibly a million yards have already been brought to the property. You know, there's so much misinformation out there. We're very excited to be here tonight to, to allow the commission to get the true story of what's out there. And also, we want to invite the commission to come out to the property for a site walk. And I'll, and I'll talk a little more about that a little bit later in the presentation. So, so we've, we've established and we've provided an extensive protocol on how material would come into the property, how it would be, how it would be verified and certified to be clean, to put those protective measures in place. So that's phase one of our SEC plan. Phase two of our plan would be when we would actually construct the office building. Once this area's been graded, once we have kind of our formal front of house established, we would construct the office building. We would then shift the processing of the imported material towards the center of the site. We've relocated the location of the proposed bins for material intake sorting and processing there. And then we would continue to fill the northern edge of the property. Phase two would include the import of approximately 550,000 cubic yards and we would expect it would take three to four years in duration to complete. And then phase three would be, we would shift the access from Cambridge Drive to now bring access through Independence Drive from north. We would continue the filling operation to establish our final proposed grades in this area. Any processing and such would take place in this northern edge. This would, this would be approximately 595,000 cubic yards and then again take three to four years. And actually, as part of our proposed revisions, we're reducing the overall amount of fill that be, that would be required to be imported. At the time of application, we were approximately 1.3 million yards we need to be brought to the site to meet our desired and proposed grades. Through our summer of our revisions, we're probably going to be reducing that down to approximately a million yards of material. But I'll be able to provide you with a little bit more detail on those exact calculations the next time we're together. Additionally, as part of both phase one and phase two, one of the things we want to do immediately is to start to rehydrate this wetland through de-watering activities which are permitted under our general permit for stormwater discharge with the DEEP. So we would, we would be proposing to de-water and actually pump water up this space along a pipe along this, this easterly wetland edge to, to start to rehydrate this immediately, which we think will certainly improve the value and the function of that wetland. And again, as we, as we work towards our ultimate goal of filling this to restore the surface hydrology and the surface contributing watershed, that's a mechanism we can use during construction to try to get as much water back there as possible. As part of our application, we also went to the Architecture Review Board and the commission should have a positive referral from them from our meeting in August. The, we included our proposed floor plan and just for the commission to, we, you know, we wanted to come in and build an office building which can essentially serve as an office for the operations on the property. It can also serve as a place where we can bring potential users who may want to use the property from a development standpoint. It gives us a place to kind of set up and establish an area where we can have a, a functioning office to kind of help facilitate and encourage the future development. And the building we actually selected was one this commission has seen before. We wanted to follow and mimic something that's been approved by the commission. And we used a building which was recently constructed for All-Star Transportation at another, at 34 Enterprise in the Business Park. And we went to ARB and they actually viewed our proposed building, architecture, and landscaping and other aesthetics very favorably and that, that letter should be in your, in your file. Included in our submission materials, we did provide a traffic assessment. And I believe Mr. Agresta kind of characterized it in his description of the property. You know, we are proposing that these activities take place over a 10-year period, simply because the amount of material that's required to be imported is going to take a long time to source. And a lot of this material can come through a couple different avenues. You know, oftentimes, there are large projects where a high school or something may be, may be demolished, the, the demolished concrete structures and things like that, those all meet the definition of clean fill. And those can be great sources for large import jobs to actually help us achieve these grades. So because we have so much material that needs to be imported, it's going to take time for that material on that market to materialize so we can actually source this material and place this material in accordance with, you know, standard construction methodologies. So we did provide a traffic memorandum to kind of identify and evaluate the potential traffic impact associated with truck, with this truck traffic. Using that 1.3 million cubic yards spread out over 10 years, that'd be approximately 75,000 truckloads of material. When you actually look at our, when the facility wouldn't be in operation and over its duration, that's probably about 30 to 40 trips coming in, 30 to 40 trips leaving during a general workday. But when you actually drill down to a peak hour, the hourly trip generation for this facility would probably be about five trucks entering and five trucks exiting in an hour. And given the existing traffic patterns along Route 25, an addition of five trips coming and five trips going will not have any adverse impact on the traffic, traffic operating conditions of the roadway network and is probably actually far less than the traffic that's been generated from this site over the past, you know, 14, 13, 14 years. So we did, we did look at the traffic. We provided and submitted a traffic memorandum which showed that we do not believe this will have an adverse impact on the traffic operating conditions. In addition to that, as part of our submission, we did request a number of waivers from the excavation and fill permit regulations, which is provision of your regulations, which we have the ability to do. The first waiver had to do with no change in contour to be made within 25 feet of any property line. So we are proposing to change the contours within 25 feet, both along the southern perimeter of the site, the northern edge of the site, and then along the shared property line between the two properties. We're trying to, again, restore the site and fix some of these areas which have kind of been established. of been established over the years from the ongoing operations. And I think this waiver request is consistent with what this commission has viewed on past applications. And again, from a restoration standpoint, we believe that this is the best way to get this property back to be a viable contributing property for the community. Section 6.49D, no artificial slope greater than 14 degrees to the horizontal, or 4:1 shall be created within 50 feet of any property line. Again, as part of our restoration, we're going to have to do some of that grading, both along perimeter property lines and internal property lines. Section 6.4.9E, no artificial slope greater than 14 degrees within 50 feet of any street line. Again, as part of some of the restoration work towards the north end, we are proposing to grade within 50 feet. And lastly, section 6.4.9P, all permitted such activities regardless of permitted location shall not include permit or involve materials from off-site locations. In order for us to fill this hole, to fix this problem, to restore this site, we're requesting the commission ability to allow us to process materials brought in from off-site so we can source the material, process the material, and place the material on our property. Again, we are not requesting approval to export any material, we are simply requesting approval to import material, process that material, and then place that material on the property. There are a few other things I wanted to mention and then certainly engage the commission in questions. As I mentioned before, we had, we conducted during the review with the Southwest Conservation District, they came out and they did a site visit, and members from the Aquarium and Water Company actually attended as well. Denise Halsted, the wetlands agent, came with us. And I think we had a very good walk, and as part of that walk, they were able to generate their comments. Subsequent to that, we also scheduled two site walks with the Monroe and the Wetlands Commission. The first site walk was conducted on Saturday, I think we could go Saturday. It was a very successful walk. And we have a second site walk scheduled with the Wetlands Commission for next Tuesday, September 8th at 4:30 PM. What I'd like to do in a request from this commission is, given the size of the property, given the complexity of the application, I'd really, I'd like to request that this commission consider scheduling a special meeting, and we want to invite you to attend that same site walk next Tuesday, September 8th at 4:30 PM. We think it'd be very beneficial for the commission to see the property in its current condition, to get a better handle on what we're proposing, our walk. You know, we start down at the property, we walk around the perimeter, we get to kind of see what the condition of the wetlands, what we were trying to restore, we walk along the northern edge, we get to see the site in its entirety, get a really good handle on the activities that took place and what we're proposing to do. We come back along the western edge, and then, you know, we kind of really get to see the entirety of the piece, which I think is very beneficial. And I think it would actually help the commission in their review of the application to kind of better understand exactly what we're looking at and how we can, and why we believe that this is the best way to address the issue, to restore the site, and to really solve a problem that's kind of been several years in the making. Additionally, as I stated, we've engaged a hydrogeologist who is working on an assessment regarding groundwater. We've engaged a licensed environmental professional who's provided and conducted environmental testing throughout the property. Additionally, as part of our ongoing inspections in accordance with our DEEP general permits, we've also done superficial testing for stormwater discharges, which includes analytical analysis for chemical constituents. All of those, all of that analysis has come back and demonstrated that there is not an environmental issue on this property, there's not contamination on this property, and all those allegations are baseless and without merit. Additionally, earlier today, earlier this evening, before this hearing, we did provide land use staff with copies of countless pages, or almost 150 pages worth of analytical testing, which has taken, which has been conducted for material brought to the property to date. And the procedures that are in place, that are included as part of our intake protocol, have been utilized on the property so that every, any material that's come to the property, especially since the new owner took ownership, but even prior to that, it all included and required analytics to show that it met the definition of clean fill in accordance with DEEP. And we provided staff extensive documentation for material that's already come to the property. We're going to be providing that formally to both commissions as part of their review. And again, we're also going to be providing additional analytical testing which was conducted by an LEP to again show and reinforce that this will not have an adverse impact. You know, we've tried to approach this project, you know, we understand what is required under the regulations. We are holding ourselves to a standard that far exceeds anything that's required by the DEEP or the Town and Monro's zoning regulations. There are countless other properties in town that have gotten standard site plan approvals or even excavation or fill permit operations which did not require testing, did not require QAQC testing. We have offered and we are offering as part of our application materials requirements and thresholds which far outweigh and far exceed anything that's required under the regulation, because we're trying to be transparent and forthcoming with the commission. We want to fix an issue, we want to fix a problem, we want to restore a site. As Mr. Karp said, he is not in the aggregates business, he is in the real estate development business. He did not buy this property to import contaminated material, he did not buy this property to create a problem, he wanted to fix a problem. And we honestly believe that this application represents the absolute best way to do that. Additionally, there was some discussion and question in Mr. Agresta's comments about the permitting path we have proposed to take with this application. When we went through the process of responding to the wetland violation, and we determined what our overall overarching goals would be for the property, it required restoration and an extensive amount of fill to be imported to the property. So in order for us to achieve that goal, we would have to receive a permit from Planning and Zoning, the Planning and Zoning Commission, in addition to one with Wetlands. Now, with planning and zoning, we could have pursued, or we could have possibly looked at securing an excavation and fill permit rather than a site plan approval. However, there are conditions imposed on excavation and fill permits which don't allow us to meet the goal of actually importing enough material to restore these watersheds. This commission only has the ability to grant a two-year permit for a filling operation with a two-year extension. This activity is extensive. This activity requires, in our estimation, 10 years to complete these improvements. And in accordance with the regulations, our application, our site development plan application complies with all of the requisite zoning regulations, and it is a valid path for us to pursue approval. It allows us to secure a wetlands application, a wetlands approval to achieve these goals, and it also allows us to achieve a planning and zoning approval to achieve these goals. We're trying to do this in the most streamlined way possible so we can commence and finish and complete this activity in the shortest time span that's possible. And that's why we took the permitting path and the permitting strategy that we did implore, because it's something that's allowed through the regulations. And again, everything that we're proposing is in compliance with the Monroe zoning regulations. And we believe that our application materials are comprehensive, and they're robust, and they demonstrate that compliance. And we believe that with some of the revisions that we will be proposing and providing in response to staff comments, in response to the independent third-party review from the Southwest Conservation District, and even comments that have been generated by the intervenors professionals, we believe that we can and we will provide an even improved plan, an improved application, which will again meet all the requirements of the Monroe zoning regulations, and it is in accordance with the plan of conservation and development. With our request for a 10-year permit, the state statutes does allow for Planning and Zoning Commissions to consider longer durations for the timing of a permit. And again, that's why we're requesting a 10-year duration, simply because the order of magnitude that's required for the amount of earthwork operation and the amount of import activity that's going to be needed to achieve these goals, we need that longer time period. So, you know, in terms of, you know, we're happy to work with the commission to incorporate, you know, any additional reporting the commission may want. We've offered to do that as part of our, as part of our application process to ensure that those same protection measures can still be in place. Again, Mr. Karp is not here to create a problem, he sort of fixed a problem. And we believe that this application and the extensive time and thought and effort that's been put into it will really create an opportunity for this property to be put back into a much more productive use than how it's been for the past couple of years. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission may have. I know I've been talking for quite some time, so I know I had a lot of information. Again, we expect to, you know, we know that this hearing will be left open, and we do respectfully request that the commission consider attending a site walk, scheduling a special meeting for a site walk for next Tuesday. And happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you, Mr. Solly, for that introduction to your application. I just want to do a little bit of logistics planning of my own here. Do you want to do the first round of formal response to staff applications offline like we used to do? And then move ahead tonight with general public, intervenor, and commissioner questions?
Yeah, I think, I'd prefer, I don't want to go point by point through staff comments. I touched on some of them in terms of like our strategy for the permitting. What I'd like to do is prepare formal responses and submit those revised plans to staff with the additional information I talked about. I think what I'd like to really get out of tonight, if possible, is from questions or comments or concerns from the commission. We can hear from the public and then the interveners professionals as well.
All right, that sounds like a good idea. As far as next Tuesday, I don't know if we have enough notice for that, but we'll have to poll the commissioners and see when. I think that is a good idea to do a site walk. I mean, I've been to the property, but I don't think any of the other commissioners have. And it is pretty, it is an eye-opener, I have to say. So then we'll go to the public at this point. And then we'll move to the intervenor and then to the commissioners. So are there any members of the general public that have any comments in general for this Hearing none, are there any members of the general public that have any comments in favor of this application? Hearing none, are there any members of the general public that have comments or questions in opposition to this application? Well, then we'll go on to the intervenors. Do the intervenors want to make any statements or have any questions at this point?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Joel Green, I practice law in Bridgeport with the Law Offices of Green and Just a moment, I'm going to see if I can get my camera. There we go. It's my pleasure to appear before you this evening on behalf of Peter Metropolis, trustee who is the owner of a budding property at 36 Timothy Hill Road. So I have appeared before the commission in the past with respect to matters related to this item. My client has significant concerns regarding the quality of the groundwater and the impact on water quality and air quality as a result of the activities that have been conducted over the past 15 years.
Thank you, Georgia.
All right. Anyway, with me tonight are Mr. Metropolis and Dave Yorkland, one of our consultants. As Mr. Agresta had indicated in his comments, we have submitted a letter in the course of the present proceeding before the Inland Wetlands Commission. One is by Evan Glass of Alta Environmental, and it recites a series of questions and concerns regarding the nature and extent of the activities. I note that that letter has also been received by this commission. I would be happy to have Mr. Glass formally submit that to the commission if you'd like, but if not, I would refer to the commission, to the copy that has been provided. We've also provided a, a letter from Mr. George Logan of Rema Ecological Services, which similarly indicates questions and concerns regarding the impact and the nature and scope of the activities that are posed by the applicant. And there are a number of questions and concerns. I'm not sure what the chair prefers in terms of the applicant responding to those questions, or what the process would be on that. I know that the applicant has indicated that the applicant will be responding to Mr. Agresta's memo. Is it, I guess I would ask for you, Mr. Chairman, whether the applicant intends to respond as well to the requests for information by Mr. Glass and Mr. Logan?
Let me ask Mr. Solly that question. Do you like to respond to their questions in writing?
We will be providing a response to some of the comments and questions raised by the intervenor in writing. Yes, that's something that we'll be providing as part of our response to the wetlands comments. If those memorandums have also been formally entered into the record from a planning and zoning standpoint, we're happy to address them on this side as well.
That answers your question, Mr. Green.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Solly. So it would be our intent to, to present at a later hearing after that information has been provided and we can provide our conclusions. I should note that Mr. Glass, Mr. Logan, and I attended the site walk this past Saturday. It was very informative. I would submit to the commission that the, for example, the picture that is presently up on the screen before the commission does not reflect the present state of the site. As the commission may be aware, and I'm sure that the chair is aware from his site visit, there have been extensive activities. It is, as the chair said, very eye-opening to see this site. And we will show how, during our presentation, how the site has evolved over the years. There has been significant filling in addition to excavation. It is apparent that there has been filling on the site over the years. One of the recommendations and conclusions that Mr. Solly failed to mention by Southwest, and once again, Southwest is an independent consultant who is retained by the Inland Wetlands Commission, but in his executive summary on page 2, Mr. Sullivan says that, for example, "The wetlands have lost significant water recharge from over excavation of the quarry area on the property. This has disrupted the surface flows into the wetlands and probably groundwater flows as well." He goes on to state that "the sheer scale of this project and the proximity to drinking water source headwaters elevate the concern of potential water quality issues for the property and proposed application." Reconnecting the surface hydrology makes sense as a way to rehydrate, which Mr. Solly referenced. But Mr. Sullivan goes on to say, this is on page 2, "But there is no information in the proposal about how the groundwater flows and patterns will affect these same wetlands." He goes on to say, "One recommendation is that an independent third party is hired to inspect the sediment and erosion control devices." And he goes on to speak about rehydrating lost wetlands on the site, and the details of how this is done and other ramifications to the hydrology and hydrogeology of this lot. ramifications to the hydrology and hydrogeology of this, like, require more information before moving forward with an approval. Now, with respect to this commission, and obviously, uh, to some degree, your jurisdiction overlaps with the concerns of the inland wetland commission because I note, um, for example, uh, that among the considerations for this commission, uh, when you ultimately get to, uh, consider this application are, for example, in 7.2.2 of your regulations, um, ecological considerations. And I note that paragraph A, uh, says that, uh, site and building development shall cause minimal degradation of unique or irreplaceable land types and minimal adverse environmental impact on critical areas such as streams, wetlands, areas of aquifer recharge and discharge, steep slopes, highly erodible soils, areas with a high water table, flood plains, areas of mature vegetation, and extraordinary wildlife nesting feeding or breeding grounds. Uh, also 7.2.7A speaks extensively as to, um, stormwater management, upper surface water management, and it talks about, uh, they need to, uh, preserve existing natural drainage patterns in wetlands, enhancing groundwater recharge areas and protect other properties. Um, we will ultimately show the commission how areas of this site, including, um, what we will call ponds and areas, um, water courses were, have been filled over the past 10 years. Um, I suppose I should also point out that, um, while the applicant is careful to point out that they've only owned this property for some 18 months or since May of 2019, that really isn't, uh, relevant to the consideration of this application by the commission. Really, this commission is bound to look at the impact of the proposed project, and that's in the context of everything that has happened on this site over the past 15 years. Uh, and it is our position that there has been extensive fillings, that material has been brought to the site. And, um, we are going to recommend, consistent with the, um, Southwest Conservation District and, um, the consultants that we have retained each recommend that there be a period of groundwater monitoring, uh, that there be, uh, test wells and that there also be test holes and test flurries dug on this property to be sure that as this project, if this project and as this project moves forward, that there is not, uh, that anything isn't buried or left to chance underground. And certainly my client has significant concerns as an abutting property owner. I note that, uh, section 9.7 of your regulations allows, uh, well, first section 7.1.5, um, three says in evaluating a standard site plan application, the commission may retain an engineer, land surveyor, architect, landscape architect, planner, uh, attorneys, or other consultants to review, comment, and guide its deliberations on any application, subject to the requirements for an escrow account as may be required in accordance with 9.7.2. Section 9.7.2 of your regulations speaks to the fact that, um, the commission can require, um, the applicant to, uh, be liable for the costs and expenses of the consultants that are required, uh, by this commission. I think it's clear that in order to truly understand, um, the ecological consequences of this project, those test wells, the water monitoring and test holes are, uh, prudent and necessary in order to satisfy the standards and the findings that this commission may make. So, uh, sort of in order to keep this application moving forward, uh, I would recommend that the commission adopt a motion this evening to, uh, retain those consultants that it deems, uh, necessary to, um, assess this application as you're permitted under the regulations. Uh, I, uh, with that, I would, uh, I suppose reserve our presentation by our consultant till once again, the applicant has provided the information that we have requested. Uh, and, uh, we look forward to addressing the commission on the, uh, elements of our intervention at that time. I don't know if anyone on the commission has any questions for me at this point.
Well, thank you, Mr. Green.
I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your patience.
Okay. Um, if you want to, uh, hang around a little while, I'm gonna poll the commissioners now. For questions to be addressed to either you or Mr. Solly. So let's start with, um, Mr. Maene.
Wow, it's finally my turn. That's excellent. Um, I'll even show my face for this one. Uh, first things first, Kev, he's not in the business of excavation, correct?
Mr. Carp?
Yeah.
No.
No.
And in fact, and in fact, I'd like to...
Well, hold on, let me ask a question. So, not in the business of excavation, but we've been excavating for 18 months.
No, that's not true. We have not been excavating on the property for 18 months, Mr. Maene.
Been excavating for quite a while, though, and selling material, been doing all that kind of stuff.
So, um, the property was approved in 2006, which included the significant removal of material. We've established that the prior owner removed more than what was allowed since 2019.
We've established that a long time ago.
Yes, and, and I'd also like to say that, that, that the merit of this application needs, we're talking about the future. We're talking about how to move this property forward. And I think the commission needs to consider the merit of the application as we move forward. Now, the, there's not been excavation or additional excavation.
We have a lot to consider. We have to consider all the violations that are there. We have to consider, we have to consider, we don't even know what's going into that hole. Do we, you're saying there's still going into that hole or fills gone into that hole, but do we have metrics for that? Do we have paperwork saying what's going there?
We do, actually. This afternoon, I submitted over 150 pages of, of analytics for material that's been imported to the property. Yes.
Okay. But this stuff's been imported for, it didn't just start today or it didn't just start last week, correct?
No, it didn't. Actually, included, some included in that analysis is some, is some material that's been imported as recent, as early as 2018, including correspondence with staff that acknowledged and allowed for that material to be imported.
So you, you've, you've accounted for everything that goes into that property?
Yes. Every load of material has to be inspected and include a certificate of conformance that it meets the definition of clean fill.
And we have all that information as of today?
We, we are providing additional information, but we did provide some information to staff today, yes.
Just so that, this is Arnold Carp, just so the commission would understand, that would be 25 or 27 reams of paper. So what we've sent is the overview on any of the larger, uh, uh, material that has come into the site. So somebody on staff will go through it. We're more than happy to provide whatever is needed, but I can tell you that certainly during my ownership and even through the prior ownership, it is extremely well documented. So the comments of, geez, we don't know what is going into the hole, actually we do, and uh, it has been tested and, uh, the results are very clear.
Excellent. Now, we do an independent study, right? The independent study came from the town of Monrell. We hired a third party for that?
Correct.
And the third party that we hired is not in agreements with your party?
Actually, no, the, the independent third party agrees with the main conclusion of our proposal that bringing in this fill and rehydrating the wetland is the right way to address the property. The independent consultant did recommend that we engage a hydrogeologist and establish and evaluate a well system and a groundwater monitoring system which can better, um, uh, evaluate and establish, you know, that there won't be any impact to the groundwater flows or environmental quality or anything like that. We are and have engaged a hydrogeologist and that investigation is underway.
Beautiful.
Again, it's all...
For now, that's all I...
Okay, just so that the commission understands, uh, Kevin Solly, through his engineering firm, has been providing, uh, reports on any rain, what event of, what is that, over an inch? Kevin?
Over half an inch.
Over half an inch. So, uh, basically what is going on the site is extremely well documented.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Is that it for you, Commissioner Maene, for now? Okay, let's go to, uh, Commissioner Ryan Condon.
Yes, I, I hope you can hear me. I don't know what's going on, but yes.
Okay, thanks. We'll go to Ryan now.
The building that you're looking to, uh, put on the property, is that, uh, I mean, is that really 100% what we're looking to put there? I know you mentioned other things, or was this kind of just a building that you took plans from another project and kind of threw in front there just to get the ball rolling on this with the fill aspect? And then is there a possibility you're gonna come with a completely different building plan later on?
We're, we're, we are proposing to construct that building in accordance with the schedule and the, the detailed plan that we've provided. Um, you know, with the, Mr. Carp is actively marketing the property to get, uh, more higher and better use, but, um, until any other plans come to fruition, we are proposing to construct that office building as proposed in accordance with the timeframe that we've outlined.
Okay, and when did the, um, all right, so you have still, when was the last time you guys were bringing fill onto the property?
Um, there's been import of, on the property up until, um, a cease and desist was, um, upheld by the ZBA Tuesday night.
Okay, so it's been continuing to happen until just this past Tuesday?
That's right.
Okay. Uh, that's it for me for now. Thank you.
Okay. Let's go with, uh, Mr. Ambrosi. Commissioner Ambrosi, you, go ahead.
Kevin. Mr. Solly, um, well, first couple of questions I have. Well, I have a bunch of questions. How much fill, how much material was removed from that property over the years? Do you have that calculation?
Um, I don't, but it's probably over two and a half million yards.
Over, but you don't have an exact number? But you can, you can pretty much figure it out because you knew what the grades were before and you knew what the grades were before the filling started, right?
That's correct.
All right, so can you give us that information?
I can.
Okay, so I would like that for the next meeting.
Okay.
And on your manifest, how many, how many yards, have you calculated how many yards you have brought into that site?
Um, I, I could. We don't have, I don't have that exact number, but we can give you an estimate. We have manifests from, uh, several large projects. Um, I think it's in tons. We could probably back into how many yards we believe that is. Uh, another component of this, of this site itself and the operation is, um, the, the site itself had a lot of overburden. So there's a lot of material that was generated from, from, you know, prepping the site to remove the rock. That site's been on, on, that material has been on the site and moved around the site additionally through the crushing operations that took place for several years. That generates a number of byproducts, including stone dust, which is, uh, so there's actually very large stockpiled of some of that material on site as well. So, so if you go out there, you can see materials moved, some of which has always been on the site, has been native to the site, and then there has been some material imported, yes.
Okay, um, has your client ever crushed or blasted on that property?
So, um, when the property was first, um, acquired in May, we had a meeting with town staff, uh, probably before the June of 2019. Um, there were some areas that were discussed that needed to be, um, kind, there, there needed to be, I think, one blast to kind of clean up and make an area safe, so it could actually be prepared to receive material in the future. So I think since the ownership, there may have been one or two blasts, but that, that blasting was being done under a permit that was valid at the time. And then the, the applicant actually agreed to, you know, halt all blasting. And there hasn't been any blasting on the property since, I think, before July of 2019.
No, I understand that, but you didn't answer the question. Were you blasting and crushing on that property? Yes?
The activity was being, yes, the activity was being done under a valid permit, which the town and the town attorney acknowledged was valid.
But the property was already over-escalated, so why would he continue to do that? I mean, didn't he do his due diligence before he brought this property? He knew there were violations on it?
Kevin, I can, I like...
Yeah. Uh, Leon, it's Arnold Carp. The answer of the blasting, I believe there were two blasts that we made the town well aware of, and those were done for safety reasons. The day of purchase, there were several cliffs and overhanging rock that was unsafe, and that's why that was blasted. Uh, the material was brought out of the hole and crushed, but, uh, that was, uh, completed, uh, in, uh, June of 2019. Um, so, uh, and that was all under, uh, I will say, town prerogative, which was, this was fully discussed at several meetings with D and Z and town officials. What was, it was, it was discussed with planning and zoning commission? No.
Town officials, town staff.
Not, not with the commission? It was done with town officials in full knowledge and, um, uh, with, with their knowledge because they then came back to me and said, we'd prefer you not to blast. And I said, I have no reason to, and we at our own validity decided not to do any more blasting. So I'm, I'm not sure where the question's going, but quite honestly, the answer is, yes, the, the, the town was well aware of the two blasts, or possibly three, I'm not quite sure, that were done just for safety concerns. Okay. All right. Now, I got questions for you now, Kevin, again. Was there, was there, was there any vernal pools destroyed on that property?
There were, there were no vernal pools destroyed. There was less vernal pool activity observed in the most recent vernal pool assessment conducted in May of this year. And the reason for that decreased activity was the reduction in watershed.
So, so that means that they were destroyed, basically, because they were, they're basically, they couldn't serve their purpose, no?
Actually, vernal pools are incredibly resilient. So by restoring the watershed, we'll actually be able to restore that vernal pool and those vernal pools will be able to kind of...
So they'll come back, is what you're trying to say?
Yeah.
Do we have an expert that on, that will tell us that they'll come back?
Absolutely. Bill Kenny, our soil scientist, has said that, um, the review from Southwest...
Yeah, we have, we have our own... The inland wetlands required us?
The independent consultant, the independent consultant for Southwest Conservation District shared that same sentiment. They said that doing this work and restoring the watershed will re, will revert the indirect impact to the wetlands and it'll fix those vernal pools.
That's what, or they, they could fix the vernal pools. They didn't say definitely would, right?
They agreed with our approach.
Okay. No, I just got a couple of other questions because I need, I need to get the manifest that I need to know how much material is brought into the site. I need to know how much, how much material was removed from the site. I need to know what the elevations of the site are today and the quantity of material that was put into the site because Mr. Carp just owned this recently. And I'm not saying that, that he probably did his, his work and he's doing what he had to do. I have to worry about what the previous owner did. And I need to know what is in that hole. And I need to know how deep that hole was. And I need to know if that hole was deep enough to hit the aquifer or not. I don't know if anybody asked that question or asked anybody that or how deep that hole ever was or if it ever hit ground, groundwater. I'm not talking about, you know, you're talking about groundwater. I'm talking about aquifer water that where people's wells can get contaminated. And then that was what we need to know, what can go into that site and what can't go into that site. So do we know that or do we know any of that?
We, we actually do know all of that. Um, we have, you know, as I stated, we, we have, we have uncovered groundwater. There's a well on the property and we've also tested the groundwater on the There's a well on the property, and we've also tested the groundwater on the property. Those test results, which were, which the LEP was unable to get it done for this meeting, but he's, we're going to provide a report from WSP and, and then an LEP, which is going to have a summary of all those analytics. The groundwater on the property is clean, it does not have any contaminants, and there is no impact to the aquifer, the groundwater. I'd say, you know, and as part of our hydrogeologists, we're going to be doing a well survey of not only our site, but the surrounding properties, and I think, you know, we're actually clean compared to some other properties, you know, in the vicinity. So, um, this site, we do know that, we know where the elevations are, we know how much material has been brought in, we know the quality of the material that's been brought in, and we can provide analytical testing that supports that.
So you, you've dug a well and hit groundwater, right? And you know how deep that is?
There's a well on the property, it's been there, um, I think.
I'm talking about where the hole is, have you dug a well over there?
There, there's a well immediately adjacent to it that has been used, that is deep down, that has been used for.
Do you know the dimensions of that well?
I can provide it for you, I don't have, I don't have it, I don't have it readily available, but I can get, we can get that.
I would love for you to do that.
Sure.
The other question I have to ask you is, you want to bring in material to put into the property. Now, all material that you're going to bring in cement, some of it's going to have rebar in it, right? I would imagine, and you're going to take it out of there and you're going to put that in there, and then you're going to have waste. And then you're going to have to remove that waste. So that means that those trucks are going to have to remove that waste, it's not going to stay on the property. You're, you're stating that you're only going to import everything and you're not going to export anybody. You're definitely going to export, there's no doubt that you're not, because whatever you have waste left over has to leave that property. So we have to account for those trucks, and we have to count for how much waste you're going to take off that property. And then on top, and believe me, I don't want to get into where, w- once this thing is done, is, and, and, and and Mr. Carp seems like he's a very honorable person and that he'll, he'll do what he has to do, but we need to make sure that we have all this stuff done before we can allow this to proceed forward. And it's not, I'm not blaming it on Mr. Carp, and I'm not, this, this has been going on for years, and we have a property owner next door that's concerned about his well, his water and his property, and he has every right to be concerned. And so we need to do our due diligence as a commission to make sure that we cover everything and make sure that there is no material in that property that's not supposed to be there. And so that's why we need those numbers. We need to know how much filling brought in, how much fill left. I need to know the elevations, I need to know the elevations that when there was nothing put in there, because I'm sure that you have all that over the years, that somebody has that somewhere, right? Or do we have it, or you have it, or who has it?
There's, there had been, the, the, the town of Monroe, town staff is more than aware of the activity on the property. There were quarterly inspections reports submitted, uh, for years during the operation, they're well aware of that. We can certainly provide that information to you. We agree that we want the commission to do their due diligence and to make sure that what we're proposing and concur that what we're proposing addresses all these issues. Again, the application materials we've prepared and we've provided far exceed what's required under the regulation. We, the, the, no other, no other property in town has any of the restrictions in place or, uh, uh, import requirements that we're proposing as part of our application. We've gone above and beyond because we want to be transparent, we want to.
I, I got all that, but part of your application here is to address the violations that you have, that, that Mr. Carp, Carp inherited. He bought the property and he inherited those violations, so part of your application are trying to vet, address these violations, no?
Leon, would you like us to move forward? Or would you like us to review history? As we've stated, we have manifests for everything that has been brought into this site. This site was an outgoing site well until 2017 or 2018. So this comment from others that a million cubic yards has been brought in is absolutely inaccurate. We have the data, Kevin will bring it to them, you know, we'll show it to the commission.
Right, like I said, the commission doesn't have the data. So we would like to get the data, because the commission really doesn't have that data.
And we're happy, and we're, we're happy to provide that to you, Mr. Ambrosi, we're happy to provide that to you. We're happy to give you the analytical data which shows that the water is clean on that property, that there has not been, you know, again, we have the analytics, we can give that to you, demonstrate that the, we're going to provide independent testing that should, with the analysis that shows the constituents within the material throughout the property, we are going to provide all of that. And so protection measures in place.
So, Mr. Sully, then you're willing to do, um, you're willing to do test wells?
We've already, we've already done it.
How many have you done?
We've, we've already done testing of the water on site, and we're going to test the well that's on site as well. We're also working with our hydrogeologist to develop an additional testing requirement. Mr. Ambrosi, we're, 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 we are happy to provide the information we've established, we've collected. We believe that we're able to address your concerns, and we've again gone well, far and beyond what is required under the regulation and what is held, what every other applicant is held to. We've been, I don't believe this commission has ever asked for fill analysis on any property before.
Wait, wait a minute.
And we're, but we're providing this to you, we're, we're, we're willingly offering this to the commission.
I, I'm not, I'm not trying to get into an argument with you. We are here to address violations on the property and to bring the property into, you know, a usable piece of property. Am I, am I not mistaken, okay? Most applications aren't like that, and we're not addressing violations on the property. There's numerous violations on the property, the property was over excavated for one, which is not Mr. Carp's fault, which I understand that, but he inherited a piece of property, and if he inherited a property, I'm sure he was well, well, he knew that it was over excavated, because there's no way that you couldn't tell when you walked into that piece of property. The property never was a mine, the property, it has an illegal building on there. It has, it has a bunch of stuff on that property that is illegal, and you know that. And it's not that, you know, you're in front of this commission for us to address this and to try to work this out. And so when you say that, that we're holding you at a different standard, we're really not holding you at a different standard. We are, we have to address the violation, and that's my opinion. I mean, it's, I'm only one commissioner, but I'm saying to you is that we have other property owners in the area that are concerned about this. And so we have to do our due diligence, and so don't keep on throwing up that, that we don't hold anybody else to this standard, because this is a unique piece of property.
Hey Leon, this is Commissioner Burn, Maene, I, I'm in 100% agreements with you as well. So, and again, and again, we're, 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 we're in agreement too, and we're happy to provide the information that we have to address these concerns. We are not trying to, we're not, we're not trying to withhold any information or, um, you know, pull the wool over anyone's eyes. We're being here, and we've been here, we've been working with staff, we've been working with the wetlands commission, trying to address this, trying to restore the site, trying to bring this back to a better place. And frankly, this is the third or fourth public hearing we've had across wetlands and planning and zoning, and the only resident that's raised any concerns is in 3,000, 3,000 miles away in California. It is professional. We are here, we are committed to the community, we are trying to move this property forward, and we're going to provide you the information that you're looking for to make sure that you're comfortable with what we're proposing. And regarding the activities that took place on the property, we are not, I don't think this is the time to litigate the past actions, it's trying to look at the face of the application.
I'm not trying to litigate the past actions, I need to know what was brought into the site, you understand that, right? And so that's.
Yes, and, and we will provide that information, we've provided it to town staff.
Mr. Carp, Mr., well, your client, and they didn't own this property for all these years, what just went on, you understand? So, i- i- you've got to understand that, that I have to come to make sure that what's brought into that site was clean. And if it's.
Of course, and, and.
And, and, and I might say, you could say, yeah, you have all this, you have this and this and that, but that doesn't account for stuff that maybe you don't have, because I can tell by the elevations and by how much was brought in and how much material and how much you have on the manifest, I'll be able to know all that if we get all that documentation from you. And so if that's turned into the staff, I'm sure we can figure that out and figure out how much fill was taken out of that property, and we can figure out exactly how much fill was brought into the property. And then, and then we can look at your manifest, and if there's a big number of missing there or something like that, then we can address that at that time, but right now.
I, I, I. And, and I'm, and I'm sure your concern regarding that would be, well, what if something was going to create some sort of environmental condition that was unfavorable? And we can again provide analytics to show that the water around the property does not show any evidence of that whatsoever. And I can assure you that Mr. Carp, and I can assure you that Mr. Carp, as an astute businessman, wouldn't buy a site that had environmental calamities in it, and he did his normal environmental due diligence before acquiring the property.
And then on, and then on top of it, I asked you if you're willing to do more test wells on that property, and you did not really answer that question, but I asked you that question. If you are willing to put more test wells on that property, water test wells on that property, so this commission can be assured that there's no contamination on that property.
And, and I, and I did, and I apologize if I wasn't clear, I thought I said this before, we are engaging a hydrogeologist who is going to do just that.
And so, and so you're going to coordinate that with the staff, or where are you going to put those test wells?
We're going to prepare a plan and propose that and submit it to the town commission as part of the response to Southwest, and all of that information will be also provided to you as well.
Kevin, uh. Kevin, it's Arnold Carp, we're going to follow the science, not the fiction that people believe. We're going to follow the science, you know, there are people who are going to stake their degrees, their professional licenses on what is stated and what is fact, not it, what is rumored.
Well, and we, and I, and Mr. Carp, I agree with you 100%, I don't want a rumor, I want to make sure. And so that's why I'm saying that we need to make sure, this commission needs to make sure, as long as, and even wetlands needs to make sure, but we just make, need to make sure that there's no contaminants on that property. And the other question, the other question I still had to ask Kevin is that, basically, you're going to recycle material. And you're going to take the material that is good to put in the hole, and you're going to remove the bad material, quote unquote.
We're, uh, I'm not really sure if I'm following, we're, we're not.
All, all clean fill, but all, all fill doesn't mean we, we meet, meet clean fill when it comes to your site, it has rebar in it and stuff like that. So that ha, that would have to be crushed out of there, and a rebar would have to be thrown off the side, then it has to be removed because it couldn't be put into the hole, quote, quote unquote. No, yes, no?
Yes, any, any, any deleterious material like that would be removed, would not be used as fill.
And then it would be removed off the site, right? I'm just trying to narrow this down.
Yes.
Right, so then trucks will be.
Rebar and such, rebar and such that would be removed, that would be removed from clean fill that's brought to the property would be removed from the property.
Right, so then it, then it would be, right, so then you would have trucks removing material off the property, you would have material that you couldn't use in the property, because basically you would have to remove it, right?
Yes.
You stated, all you're going to do is bring in clean material, and you're not removing anything, but you're going to be removing old material, right?
Kevin, if I can address that, it's Arnold Carp again.
I, I can, I, I, okay.
The material will all have been tested prior to arrival on the site. So yes, if there's concrete that has rebar, it is incumbent upon us to remove that, which would be removed and put into a dumpster, and absolutely would be trucked offsite.
Right.
Okay, just as any waste would be removed from any site in the town of Monroe by using a container truck.
You know, and I understand that, Mr. Carp, all I want to get down to is that he calculated out 74,000 trucks and it's that, that, it all depends what kind of material and what material is going to be removed. So it's, it's, you can, there's, that calculation is not, if you're going to remove material, right, Kevin?
The incidental material that would be, that would be removed in something like that isn't consequential, but we can certainly add some additional clarification for that. And again, since we're significantly removing the total amount of import, we're going to be far less than the 75,000 trucks estimated, even to account for any material that has to be taken off the property.
Okay, well, I guess for now, I'm just going to, we're going to hold the meeting open anyway, so my questions, I'm good for now. I'm, I'll let somebody else ask questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ambrosi. Next, Mr. Westland. Do you have any questions for the applicant or Mr. Green?
Well, Mr. Sully, Mr. Carp, clearly, I feel that the best course of action is to deal with this diplomatically. Um, I want to believe that this proposal is not disingenuous. Hopefully you can understand the frustration, frustration on our part after years of violations. At this point currently, is there any rock crushing equipment on the property?
I don't believe so. There may be, there may be some old, there may, oh, sorry.
There is nothing currently in operation, there is old material, old, uh, parts of material that is to be sold off.
Which, which leads to my next question, you know, we've been presented with images of trucks leaving that property with materials on them, you know, without having rock crushing equipment present. My, I was wondering what the material was that they were bringing off the property.
Kevin, do you want to speak to that, or should I?
Um, well, I believe there was some, uh, recycled asphalt that had left the property, I'm not sure exactly when you're, or when you're talking, or stone dust possibly, kind of inventory that was left there from before. But all those activities are peace and no longer operating and are not supposed to take place in part of this application.
Okay, and also on the first waiver, you were talking about a contour change. Um, if we're proposing to, to fill this, uh, fill this area in, I'm not really clear on why we need to change the contour, um, which is close to the property edge, can you clarify that for me?
Sure. So, um, it's best to look at our grading plan while we talk through this. So, um, for example, uh, along this edge, right? There was established, but we want to actually increase the grade from there. So we want to kind of tie into that within 50 feet of the street line and then grade from there. So, um, we don't want to leave the condition that exists, because it's not really opportune to create a finished site that is ready for future development or redevelopment. Down in this corner, we want to actually establish and build this detention basin, the same thing with this. Part of what our discussions have been with both Aquarian and it's part of the Southwest Conservation District comments, we're looking to actually establish these and create these to have a little bit more wetland plantings. We need to kind of do some grading to remove some material that's stockpiled in this location to establish a better, smooth, finished, um, condition for the future. And unfortunately, the, the activity had already taken place within those setbacks. So in order for us to restore it, we have to propose to do some activity in those areas.
I don't view Kevin as competition.
Excuse me?
Thanks, Dave, I don't view you as competition either.
Okay, I mean, you know, my, my point on that question is hopefully you can understand our skepticism on granting waivers at this point.
Uh, who's speaking?
Robert Westland.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. No, I just basically, uh, you know, hopefully you can understand our skepticism at this point on granting waivers.
Of course, and, and again, we can look at the specific areas that we're talking about. Mr. Agresta requested a figure kind of showing where these apply and for us to kind of make our case as to why the commission should consider it. We're happy to provide you with that information, show exactly where it is. If we weren't to pursue the waivers, what the finished condition would look like and how our proposal, you know, really does create a better future condition for the overall property.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Kevin, any other questions? Yeah, I, I actually have a question, I'm sorry, Robert, if you're done, I have a question.
I'm all done, Ross.
Alright, sorry to interrupt, but Kev, the building that's going on there, the one you're proposing, is that not just to bring the utilities down to the, to get the utilities down the road? Isn't that the main purpose of that building?
That, that's one of the purposes, yes. The other, so part of our re-subdivision approval for section four, the construction of that cul-de-sac and the installation of utilities into the property. When we reached out to the gas company, they would not install that gas line unless and until we had a customer to connect to it. So we are in somewhat of a necessity to have a, a building to construct to connect that gas line, to actually complete those improvements associated with section four. Um, but also we want to create a, a finished building here that we can build and establish to have a place to operate this ongoing activity for the next 10 years. And also create a place where we can bring in potential customers if they want to see the site, if they want to see it as an opportunity for their future industrial building, future, you know, distribution facility or things like that, and that office building will enable us to do that.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's, um, go to Ron Schneider. Do you have any questions?
Sure, I don't know if they're questions more so than concerns, but Kevin, hi, Mr. Carp, pleasure. Here's a concern I have is I heard things like fix this site and restore this problem and repair the watershed. When did you buy the property? Was it 2018 you said?
May of 2019. Property changed hands.
Almost a little bit more than a year ago, right? And, and you're telling me that in that year you have 37 reams of paper of the fill that was brought in there?
No, it actually predates, um, Mr. Carp's ownership. There's also some data from before, uh, the, the ownership transition.
Alright, so, so he, but there's got to be a certain amount that he brought in, correct?
Yes, and we can quantify all of that. As, as Mr., as Mr. Ambrosi asks, we can quantify every yard of material that's come to the property.
When my, when Commissioner Maiani asked if you were an excavating company, you said no, right?
Correct.
And that's, this, that's, I just don't get that part of it. I mean, I, you know, you got to understand the commission is looking at it like fool me twice, shame on us kind of thing right now. You know what I mean? And to hear all this going on, I appreciate and look forward to the future, but there's another concern I have. You're, you guys are talking three phases for 10 years? Is that what you said?
Well, Commissioner, I would have you look at my primary business, which is Carp Associates, which is a real estate development firm and custom home building firm. So if you go to Carp Associates, uh, and you see the projects that we do, which is everything from the new Cayman Y, Maritime Aquarium, uh, Mill River Park. Uh, I think that will away some of those concerns. We are not in the excavation business. I bought this site and I continue to stake it as I have since May of 2019 because it is an industrial site that can be restored and turned into an active commercial, uh, facility. Um, we are not in the, I do not want to be, do not wish to be in the mineral, uh, or the aggregates business. I am in the real estate building and development business. Um, so, uh, if you look at our 30 plus year history, I think I can away that uh, concern of what needs to be done and sort of how we plan to do it. But I can also add that, yes, I'd like to get this done sooner than 10 years, but regrettably, the amount of fill that is needed and in order for us to source material that is clean is very difficult. So that if the material that, uh, if I could find material that meets all of our criteria sooner, we would move our time schedule forward, but it is very hard to find material. Actually, we turned some down recently, um, because it does not meet, uh, my requirement, Kevin's or the DEP's of what is clean. So, uh, it has to be from a site and the way I got familiar with this site is I had several hundreds of thousands of yards of fill, a project that I am developing in New Canaan, Connecticut, that the fill was so clean, a major portion went to the elementary and middle schools in Stanford, Connecticut, and the balance uh, was sold to the prior owner of this quarry. So when you discuss how I got involved and why I thought I could restore this, yes. Uh, it, it is, on the other hand, if you look at my not-for-profit work, you'll see I'm the co-chair of Mill River Collaborative, which is a public-private park done by the mayor and then governor of Connecticut in Stanford, where we took a brown field and a polluted river and have turned that into an award-winning park in Stanford, Connecticut. So yes, I think I have the background, ability and a 30-year track record to prove that I'm not in the excavation business. I don't want to be in the excavation business. And the only reason this has taken so long is, you know, I have come to the town uh, and said, I am looking to move this forward, not to go back, uh, and this is my plan to do it.
Okay, that's fine, and I, and I don't, I'm not here to bring up the past, I'm not here to be argumentative. Let's talk about the future. My concern is whatever has been going on for the last year plus, why now for all of this? Why, why all of a sudden after the cease and desist and after we find that this is coming out now that you're planning on doing something? That, that's my other concern is. And, and by the way, I heard somebody say that nothing was brought in or out after the cease and desist, and that's not true either. Your neighbors are taking pictures, timestamps.
Mr. Snyder, I can, I can offer some, some additional clarity. One, we've been working with staff since, you know, and the wetlands commission since last November, right? We needed time to get a whole new survey done on the property, you know, and we submitted to the commission in, you know, uh, I think in, in, in April. We had COVID, we submitted our application to this commission in fully June, yet we're just seeing you now in September. You know, this isn't, there were, there were delays in the receipt of the application. We had a pre-op meeting with staff in April and we requested feedback and we never received any. We're, we're not trying to hide or not be present in this. We've been present with this. We came to the commission informally in June of 2019 and met with the regulation subcommittee July, August, September, October, November last year. We had been actively trying to work with staff to address all of these concerns and work with this commission. And, and, and the other point I want to bring up is at the time of property acquisition, Mr. Carp had a letter from an attorney saying you have a valid permit and you are, you are able to continue to operate on the property the way it has been operated for years. We met with staff, we reviewed that permit. Staff and town attorney agreed and then reinforced that exact position. You know, we, we were operating under a permit that was valid up until March. And, and that's why Mr. Carp, that's why there was activity on the property because he had legal, he had legal, uh, a legal opinion letter, which was, which was reinforced and not challenged by town staff or town, the town attorney saying he could operate. That's, that's why the activity carried, kept going and, and upon the issuance of a, of a cease and desist, the, the, the property owner's ability to contest that is through filing an application to the zoning board. He did that, through that process, the ZBA upheld the cease and desist on Tuesday of this week. And since that condition, there's no more activity on the property other than maintaining SEC measures and the fact that there is still a valid permit to construct the road with a re-subdivision of section four on this property.
And Kevin, let me add something to that. If somebody has a stamp of a truck coming or going, those were two contracts that I am happy to say we had to complete and I have laid off all of the staff at the quarry effective tomorrow, okay? Uh, it was a little bit hard for me to turn to people who are making their living, okay? Who have been loyal since, uh, we hired them to say, okay, no, you know, uh, I, I have to let you go, uh, this morning. So if somebody has a picture, that was a contractual, uh, obligation. But we have told Kevin, I have told, uh, our attorney, we have ceased operations, okay? So, um, you know, we, we are living, living to the letter of the law, but also let me refer to the $50,000 bill that I have from 2019 when we were meeting with the uh, subcommittee trying to draft a new zone that we had new, again, as Kevin said, numerous meetings that went nowhere. Um, and then unfortunately, we hit, uh, an illness with Bill Porter and then COVID, but it's not like we've been sitting on our hands. We have done all the due diligence that has been required for a piece of property of this size.
I just have never heard of any of this until now, so that's why I'm bringing it up.
Okay. And, and that's, and honestly, and, and honestly, Commissioner Snyder, that's, that's why I'm excited to finally have this hearing open. There is so much misinformation out there. There are so many baseless allegations about the condition of this property, which have run rampant. And we've had several good meetings with wetlands. We're excited to be before this commission to, 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 to speak openly and honestly with you because we haven't had the conversations, the dialogue with you. We've been having it with wetlands. We, you, you weren't on the regulation sub, you didn't participate in all those meetings. And there's all this misinformation that, that somehow, you know, there's something disingenuous going on here. That is not the case. We're going to provide, you know, our application material was comprehensive, far more than most applications that, that the town receives. You know, and, and we're going to provide additional analytics, we're going to provide, you know, the, all the things that you guys are looking, the information Mr. Ambrosi is looking for, we can provide that and we can say, and I can state up here and testify on the record that all of these allegations are unfounded. The misinformation and the preconceived notions, we hope will be, we hope every, all the commissioners can, can keep an open mind and dispel those, any preconceived notions that have to do with this site because of all the misinformation. Again, there have been complaints made all up and down the DEP to Aquarians, everybody else, and every regulatory body, every regulatory agency that's come onto this property who's inspected it, has inspected it, has found no action required.
And you have, um, you have, um, paperwork from Aquarian, deep and all that stuff? You can hand us into us?
Yes, he submitted the inspection reports from solid waste, from air and from water quality. That said, there's no further action.
Aquarian?
Aquarian, they didn't, they didn't provide any documentation saying the result is. They attended the walk, yes, they attended the walk with, with, uh, the Southwest Conservation District.
And, and Aquarian had no concerns?
No concerns. They were looking for us to make sure we had a nice robust buffer against their property, which we agreed to do and through our revised plans.
So you can produce a letter from Aquarian?
Yes, we'll request them.
Okay.
So just to finish.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The past was the past and before you owned it, it's so obvious they were doing things they shouldn't have. It's also hard not to see that what's been going on in the last year is anything other than excavation. I'm just saying it's hard not to.
There has been no excavation, uh, I will say of, you know, anything but moving of material or cleaning the site. If, you know, I, I keep on hearing that there are pictures through the duration. If somebody would like to show a photograph of April of 2019 and then a photograph of May of 2019, I can tell you that I brought my waiver to for me and we walked the entire perimeter, cleaning up every piece of scrap that we could get on, our hands on to. In the wetlands, the site is in much, much better condition than the day I acquired it. And nothing we have done has exasperated a problem. If anything, it, it has led to solutions including better monitoring of, uh, rain. Uh, Kevin was hired the same month I purchased. Uh, so solely engineering has documented, uh, you know, uh, reports and visits to the site. So there is nothing that is nefarious with this and we've worked very hard to clean up this site and to try to move it forward rather than go backward.
Okay, um, one more question with the watersheds. Mr. Soli, would you say it went to how many acres? Down to one? Or is that anything?
It went from, it went from nine point, no, it went from 9.7 acres down to 2.2.1 acres. Um, and all that activity took place before, prior to ownership transition.
That's disconcerting, that's horrible. Alright, so I am not in the excavation business. Is, moving forward, my concern is giving you, allowing this, and I'm, I, I'm, we're not even there yet, but you're, you're giving us a proposal of three phases and approximately 10 years. So my concern is, is it going to be business as usual? When is the building going to be built? How, how is it going to be done? Is there any way that through the process strategically, we can go in and find out that things have been going the right way? If you're so, if you're so adamant about you want to move forward and you want to do the right thing to repair or restore and everything, is there any way that we can periodically come in and make sure that's happening?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Yes, we're, we're happy to, we're happy to provide reports back to the commission in accordance with, you know, requirements that aren't even required as part of the site application. Happy to come back before the commission and provide a presentation as the current status. You know, we're, we're happy to, we're happy to do whatever is necessary to, to appease your concerns.
Uh, and, and I'll add another comment. Well, while everybody in town seems to run on the prior 15 years, I am happy to have opened it for site visits. I am happy to take all questions. That's why I'm on this, uh, call and I would have been in front of you guys with Kevin, okay? Because yes, I am not only staking my reputation on this project, but I own it, uh, with my family. So, you know, it's not like if I bring in something that is bad, it's not going to affect me. This is a site that I have bought for a long-term real estate development, not to exasperate a problem, not created by us. But it was quite interesting the other night when I was in front of ZBA, when everybody turned to me and said, we don't know how any of this happened over 15 years. I said, I don't really care. What I'd like to do is move this forward.
Can I interject, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, go ahead. Um, Mr. Carp, I, I'm relieved to hear that there's no nefarious intent here. Um, I don't believe there to be. I originally visited this site, uh, you know, maybe a year ago, a little, little more than a year ago. I, I, I walked up and I was kind of blown away. I didn't realize that it was the magnitude that it was and, uh, I was, you know, I actually went back there to get a second look. Um, you know, maybe a couple of months after that first site visit. And at the northerly section of the site itself, when I got back there in time, there was piles of dirt that surrounded the whole site, making it difficult to get in to take a look at the site. It almost looked like there was a, there, there, there was somebody trying to cover something up, you know? It looked like, you know, these, these piles of dirt were put there so that when you drive by, you don't realize what's going on and you have to climb piles of dirt that were, you know, 15, 20 feet high. So what was the reason for the, for the piles of dirt up there?
Partially more of a protective measures.
Yes, but quite, they're, quite honestly, everybody in the town of Monroe thought it was a place to ride their dirt bikes, uh, shoot guns on the weekend and do other things. So we were invited by one of my insurance carriers, but putting up a berm while not a perfect solution sort of would keep most of the people out of there. We now have somebody who works on the site, you know, uh, on Saturdays and hard on Sundays to keep people who shouldn't be accessing it from accessing it. So again, it was done not to prevent, uh, I'm going to say the commission or somebody who had a valid interest in it. It, the berm that was built was, uh, clearly built to keep all people out and away from the edge of the cut. of the cut that I believe is, Kevin, how deep is that? Forty, fifty deep? Yeah.
More than that, yeah.
Okay, so, so again, it wasn't to prevent people from seeing in, it was preventing people from falling in.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, that, uh, this is my concern. Thank you.
Chairman, can I speak to Mr. Ambrosi?
Go ahead. Of course.
Kevin, have you fenced it on that area?
Uh, no, there isn't any, there aren't any permanent fences installed around the area, no.
I believe it, it'd probably be a good idea to fence that area, no? You got a 45 foot drop?
Uh, it's, it's more than 45 feet, but the berms themselves do create a pretty much impassable barrier. Um, but, but we can certainly address i- if there are any other particular concerns about that, but.
Well, you got to make sure that it's safe for somebody that, like he says, riding a quad or riding a dirt bike up there, don't go off that cliff.
Well, I mean, if someone's illegally trespassing on a property and they do something that is not the property owner's fault. I mean, and there's plenty of no trespassing signs. We don't want to encourage or entice people for illegally coming on the property and riding dirt bikes.
No, I understand that, but if you have a young kid that's riding a dirt bike up there and, and for some reason he gets killed, it's, it's not going to be a good thing for the town.
Well, then I, then I.
We agree.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we spent a lot of time and money to create a berm just for that reason. And anybody else who's riding a dirt bike, either they're trespassing or they're coming through the wetlands. So we have done everything as a property owner, uh, in conjunction with our insurance company that they have suggested.
But, but we can certainly look at adding construction fencing if there are specific areas that are cause for concern.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any other commissioners that would like to, uh, ask any further questions? All right, then Will, do you have anything that you'd like to add tonight or any questions?
Uh, yes, uh, just a couple of points. Um, just for some, maybe some clarification from you, Kevin. Earlier in your presentation, you had mentioned, and you've done this once before. You mentioned that there was a letter from inland wetlands at one point in the past, that there was no need for a permit. I think I've asked you for that letter before. If you could provide that, that would be most helpful so we can, um, complete our record. Because we don't seem to have that, that rec, that record.
Uh, yeah, I think the, the, I mean, that was, that was well before my time. That was 2005. Um, I don't physically have a copy. I believe the property owner had a copy, um, but we'll, we'll certainly try to provide that for you.
Okay. Um, and I wasn't totally clear on something you had said, but if you could clarify, did you say that staff during the last few years has either allowed or accepted the import of material into the property?
Yes.
Can you be more specific as to staff, because I'm not aware of that?
Sure, so in, I think it was May of 2018, the DOT was doing a project on Route 25 and had to get rid of clean fill. That was actually reviewed, I believe, with you. And you authored an email to Mr. Kimball that said he was authorized to bring in clean fill from a DOT project on Route 25.
Okay, if you could provide that as well.
We did, it was in the information that we, it was in the information we provided this afternoon to staff, which you were copied on.
Okay. Um, and also I question the blanket statement that staff has agreed that there was a valid permit in recent time.
There was an, sure, there was a letter from town council, um, Mr. Marino, which actually acknowledged that the permit was good, but expired in March, on March 21st of 2020.
Yes, I'm aware of that letter. I just wanted to make that clarification that that was from Mr. Marino, but not from any land use staff member that I'm aware of.
Oh, I, oh, okay, I'm, I'm sorry. Sorry, the, the town attorney had acknowledged that. And I thought during our discussions last year, we talked about the validity and the veracity of the permit. Um, and it was kind of established, but I don't think we have anything formal in writing from anyone saying that. But that was certainly the, our understanding through those meetings.
It's, it was clearly the stated, um, opinion of the attorney who wrote the letter. But he wrote it, we didn't. Um, as far as another statement about, there's only been really one neighbor making complaint, that is largely true. However, there was a second neighbor at a recent meeting we had, uh, Mr. From Axol Plastics. As well as there's been many inquiries and complaints over the years. Uh, most of them have been in the office, but I would agree, it's largely been from one neighbor.
Um, and, and to that, and to that.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Again, just going to add, just to add to that point. Um, again, Mr. Axel had, had kind of raised some concerns because of some misinformation he was given by someone else. And I think Mr. Carp called him, they spoke, they talked through it. And I think that addressed, uh, Mr. Axel's concerns.
Yeah, that may well be, but I, that, just a blank statement, there's only been one is, I just wanted to be clear that it isn't just been one over the years. But again, I do agree, primarily been one for the last year.
Will, who, Will, it's Arnold Carp asking you, um, do you have a clear record of who's made the complaints prior to the last, you know, within the last year or prior to that last year?
I don't think anyone's really said much in the last, last year or so, well, especially since COVID, but, um, but I mean, over the seven years I've worked in Monroe, there have been inquiries, there have been complaints. There hasn't been anything formal. Um, I'm just saying it isn't that nobody said anything about this is all. I, you make a statement that one person is the only person complaining. That's all I want to.
During our ownership, I have personally spoken to many of the neighbors who have reached out, explained to them what our long-term thoughts are, that we're not in the quarry business, we're not in the aggregate business, and that we're looking to redevelop the property. Um, that's why I asked.
Yeah, absolutely, and I appreciate. Um, the other comments I have is really for the commission. Um, there is a letter from the Southwest Conservation District based on their engagement with the inland wetlands commission. Like all the, the information, including that of the applicants, I suggest that the commission look hard at all these informations as they formulate their opinions and ask their questions. Um, one thing I guard from Southwest is although they, they do say rehydrating the wellin is the optimal goal, they did raise questions of the probability and ability for that to be achieved and put some other things out there to, to kind of get to that a little bit further. Um, so obviously I know Kevin's going to an, answer some questions in writing, which is good. Um, but that's something that the commission should keep an open mind and look at all the, and read for themselves. And if you have questions about Southwest comments, you should invite Southwest to come and talk to you specifically. I don't think I should characterize their responses. Um, you really should ask them, and that's really true about any of the other, uh, people representing. And the commission should consider whatever it wants to do relative to its own assistance. You know, the town staff only has so many capabilities. We do not have hydrogeology, so if there's going to be hydrogeologists involved, that's something you're going to have to look elsewhere. Um, and similar other type of issues. Um, that's all I have.
Thank you, Will. Uh, Rick, do you have anything to add?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman.
All right, well then, um, I'd like to thank Mr. Soli and Mr. Carp. And I'm very happy that you made those manifests available to us. None of us have seen them yet, but I think that's a significant step in the right direction. And, uh, I think it, uh, goes to your sincerity, uh, as to really wanting to clean this site up and move forward. So I'm happy with the meeting tonight. I feel we did make progress, significant progress. Um, and we'll adjourn this public hearing, um, until next time. I would like to do the site walk. I'm not sure about Tuesday, but if, um, Will can possibly arrange one and then next week would be great.
Well, then the walk is Tuesday, correct?
Yes, and, and I will say, we, we did research and I'm sure, uh, Attorney Schellenberg can, can weigh, weigh in on this, but I do think the commission has sufficient time. I think it's only 24 hours notice. You guys could schedule a special meeting so the entire commission could be there, it'd be open to the public, just like the wetlands walk, and we'd, we'd, we'd love to have you come out on, on Tuesday at 4:30.
Right. If we're available, then that would be one.
I, I agree, there is enough time to do it if the commission members, if this commission members are available for Tuesday. That's something you can decide and vote on. And then we would have a separate notice, even though both commissions would be going on the same day. We should have a separate notice if this commission is deciding to do it. So that's, that's something you would need to address tonight, um, if you want to be part of Tuesday's site walk. Um, and, and we would have enough time to post that notice. It needs to be done 20, at least 24 hours ahead of time.
That's okay with the holiday? They'd have to post it tomorrow.
Well, if the, if the commission voted to do it tonight, um, is there any reason it couldn't be posted tomorrow morning?
No, we could, we could get that done. Is it anything more than an agenda?
No.
Will, I would just use the format from Wetland.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could, you could see what was done for wetlands and it's, you know, it's substantially the same.
Yeah, it's an agenda of a special meeting, I assume.
And would that then be open to the public too?
Yes.
Okay, great, then we'll, uh, talk about that later.
Um, Mr. Chairman, you also mentioned something about during to the next meeting, Kevin, is, is that? Makes sense?
So we have, well, we have, I know in order for us, I mean, we obviously, we always welcome the, the discussion and the commentary and want to hear more feedback and comments. We have a wetlands hearing next Wednesday, the ninth, and our walk is on Tuesday, the eighth. I wouldn't expect to get revised information to you before Tuesday. So if you wanted to, to adjourn our hearing until your next meeting in October, that would certainly give us sufficient time to submit formal written responses.
So if we were targeting, if we're targeting October 1st meeting, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, October 1st.
September 22nd would be the submission timeline.
Which we can certainly meet. We're, we're, what we're trying to do with this application, which is probably different than others, we're trying to minimize the amount of time we resubmit data and resubmit plans. The, you know, we have like a 40 some odd sheet plan set, there's a whole lot of paper, there's a whole lot of reports. We're trying to minimize that back and forth, which is why we haven't submitted wholesale responses yet. We wanted to kind of get feedback from you, feedback from wetlands, so that, you know, whatever we revise, we're not going to have to go back and forth to both commissions several times.
Well, that is our process.
All right, thank you. We know.
I, I think we have a plan. And thank you all for participating tonight.
Are you gonna, are you gonna vote on the, the special meeting?
Yeah, well, we can do that later.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is a time extension. I have a, um, I think this is, um, time extension 695 S A1 file number 1254A67 Cross Hill Road. Um, this is Monroe Little League. They have a, um, conditional approval that only lasts for three months. It has expired on August 21st. They're asking for a, um, I think a three month, no, they're just asking to extend it to September 1st.
Wow, that's, that's a little late. Um,
Well, they sent the letter in August 19th.
Yeah, this, they sent it, um, not in time to get it on the meeting schedule, obviously, the last.
Do I, uh, excuse me, do I need to recuse myself for this?
Uh, if you want to.
Um, okay, yes, you can recuse yourself. We still have enough members to vote.
Yeah.
All right, I'll recuse myself and you guys let me know when I can.
See you in two weeks.
Okay, so again, I would give the, obviously September 1st isn't going to work. So I would give them, um, I would give them to the end of, the middle of October or the end of October.
All right, let's make it the end of October. Uh, so, um, I need a motion to approve time extension.
I make a motion to approve time extension 6-95-S-A1 file number 1254A to October 31st at 67 Cross Hill Road.
Second, from you and Rosie.
I have a motion, I have a second, um, call the roll, Maeney.
He recused himself.
Uh, Condon.
Condon, yes.
And Rosie?
Yes.
Westland?
Westland, yes.
And O'Reilly, yes.
Okay.
So the motion passes. Okay, we have, uh, I, item eight on the agenda deliberations on pending items. Um, first two, the CGS.
We gotta bring Bruno back.
Okay. Did Bruno sign off or is he still watching?
I just texted him.
I think he took a, I think he took a break.
All right, well, he, we don't need him for this.
Uh, you do.
On the agenda are not available.
I think a couple of us have to recuse ourselves for this one.
They're okay, we're not, they're not ready for.
Not voting on them, they're not ready, Ryan.
Oh, okay, nevermind, sorry.
I just want to mention that the two items on the, uh, agenda for deliberation, CGS 824 Municipal Referral and the SEP 29, 2019-12 EMS Chucky Hollow Road are not available to deliberate on tonight.
I'm back.
All right, good. And the next item of business is a site walk that, uh, we were invited to on Tuesday, September the 8th at 4:30 at, uh, 64 and for Cambridge Drive and for Independence Drive. Um, I may or may not be able to make that, but I've been there recently, so I don't need to go. Um, do you want to have a general discussion on this or do you want to just see who's available? Do we all think this is a good idea? All right, Rod, you're available?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'm available, Ambrosi.
Okay, Leon?
Maeney, yes.
Maeney available? Ryan?
Um, I should be available, I might show up late, but I'll find you guys.
Okay. So, um, Will, do you need a quorum for a special meeting?
That's what I was going to ask, Barbara, what happens if we schedule this meeting? We arrive and we don't have a quorum?
That, that's fine, you don't need a quorum.
There's no votes? Okay, great. And Ron? Will you be available for the meeting on the 8th or the site walk?
Tuesday, no, I will not.
Okay, I'm not sure about it either. So you have four people that can definitely make it, so that's good.
And we can get word out to Dominic as well.
Correct, thank you. All right, so let's, uh, send out a notice for that. Next item on the agenda is to, um, approve the minutes from August 20th. I think you all have a copy of the, um, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, regular meeting minutes from July 16th. Are you in motion? Yes?
Mr. Chairman, the heading at the beginning that says July 16th is a typo.
Oh, is it August 20th?
Yeah, everything else is correct, that, just on the header is that typo that has to be corrected to August 20th.
All right, then we have a pending Planning and Zoning Commission minutes from the regular meeting on August 20th. I need a motion to. meeting on August twentieth. I need a motion to accept.
I make a motion to accept the pending meeting minutes from August twentieth, two thousand twenty, Planning and Zoning meeting.
Maeney, second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion or any changes to the minutes?
None. No.
Oh, and let's vote on the minutes. Call the roll. Maeney?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Ambrosi?
Yes.
Westland?
Westland, yes.
Snyder?
Schneider, yes.
O'Reilly, yes. So the minutes have been accepted. Next item is number ten, Regulation Review Amendment Work Session. We did go over the mixed-use regulations briefly at our last regulation meeting. Basically, just Leon, myself were at that meeting. But Will did an excellent job of filling out the, filling the bones out, I mean, filling the meat out on the bones of the regulation that we had brought here last meeting. I don't have it to bring here tonight, but there is one item that we do need to discuss. We had talked about the application being mixed-use apartments above existing commercial and apartments above commercial new, new construction. We had also talked about allowing this in all of the B one, B two, and LOR districts or zones throughout Route twenty-five, Route one eleven, and thirty-four. There has been some discussion of possibly limiting this geographically as a first step in introducing apartments to the town of Monroe, which, you know, traditionally hasn't had any apartments. We were wondering if we should perhaps limit it to a portion, the southern portion of Route twenty-five as a first step, and then perhaps if it works out, okay, expand it later. So I'd like to discuss that option, whether we should do that and how far up Route twenty-five we should go, and how we can justify stopping along Route twenty-five wherever we decide. And what, why does it make sense? So Rick, do you have anything to add to that before we discuss?
Yeah, I prepared a statement, and I like to read it now, and then I'd like for all the Commissioners to add their recommendations. In an attempt, in an attempt to address the concerns of controlling the build-out of the new apartment dwelling units resulting from the mixed-use text amendments, the following phasing plan is suggested to promote orderly growth. One, by imposing four phasing areas for the Route twenty-five, one eleven, and thirty-four areas. Phase one will include all B one and B two zone parcels, beginning from the Trumbull Town Line on Route twenty-five Main Street and continuing northerly to the northern limits of B district adjacent to the Hattertown Road, fifty-nine, and Pepper Street intersection, essentially the Stephanie District there. Phase two would include all the B one and B two zone parcels, beginning from the boundary of the phase two, which, of the phase one, which I just mentioned, northerly to the Newtown line. So I'm suggesting breaking Route twenty-five into two areas. Now, it should be noted that I have approximated a hundred and fifty units of new dwelling units for each of this phase area for a total of three hundred. That three hundred units can increase substantially if you amend your regulations allowing other activities like senior housing and standalone apartments. So based on the current regulations, mixed-use, fifty percent of the total floor area can be used for apartments, and then the conversion of the upper floor areas, I'm suggesting that it's about three hundred units total for the Route twenty-five corridor, a hundred and fifty for each phase, lower quadrant one fifty, upper quadrant one fifty. Phase three would include all B one, B two, and LOR zone parcels, beginning from the Trumbull Town Line on Monroe Turpike, Route one eleven, running north-easterly to the northern limits of the B two zone parcel, north of the crossroad intersection. It essentially takes it all the way up to where the commercial ends. And then lastly, the entire Route thirty-four corridor for parcels within the B one and B two. That's the Stevenson lumber, lumber, and the pockets of commercial on both sides of Route thirty-four. And I mean, that could be anywhere from fifty to two hundred units, depending on what happens at Stevenson lumber. The soils there are very difficult. You have a brownfield there, so I'm erring on the side of caution going on the lower side. So you're looking at two distinct areas on twenty-five, one on one eleven and one on thirty-four.
So you have to remember
Sorry, Commissioner Condon, the one eleven one, was that to the intersection of Cross Hill Road?
Yeah, well, yeah, essentially, all of one eleven commercial. It's, it's just northeast of Cross Hill Road.
Okay, thank you.
It's really, it's really all of it, you know?
Yeah.
Because that, that geographic area is really half of Route twenty-five. If you're looking at the map.
So we're really looking pretty much up the big Y, right?
Yeah, that's right. So four distinct areas, two for twenty-five, one for one eleven, one for thirty-four.
So you have to remember these numbers that Rick's giving you are for is every, absolutely every spot possible was turned into an apartment. This is the maximum number that could physically fit based on the density that is in the regulation of two point five per acre.
And what's that number, three hundred?
Three hundred for twenty-five, seventy-five, you know, three hundred plus, seventy-five plus for one eleven. And, you know, the Route thirty-four could be as low as twenty-five if Stevenson is not incorporated to a hundred and fifty. There's a lot of ifs. Now, as the Chairman is aware, we've been talking to the Health Department. They're going to be looking at twenty parcels, Route twenty-five, to start looking at what the septic conditions are. Staff and the Commission are better handled.
Hey, Rick, it's Bruno. So if, say, for some reason, everybody decides that they want to build and do apartments above their commercial. We're looking about five hundred units?
It could be more. That's, that's an approximate, yes. For all of the
Over all three phases, you're looking at five hundred units.
And that could go up substantially. Yeah, that could go up substantially if, if the lumber property, you know, that's a big parcel. If the soils are improved there.
Why do we want it to go up substantially?
Yeah, is there a roof? I want a cap.
I mean, what if
Yeah, because five hundred's a lot.
Well, by you, by you controlling the geographic areas, we're going to get a more definitive number from the Health Department. So that's one of the benefits.
Like doing it fundamentally. Rick, can we, can we do this in phases, or can we, or we don't have to, we don't have to move on to the next phase?
No, you can, you can sit on it for a while. We've, we've talked this with special counsel.
All right, so you're saying, but we have to do it all at once? It's different phases? Or can we just start off with
Yeah, you can, you can limit it to a certain geographic area.
All right, so that, that's what I think we should focus on, and we should get the numbers for that geographic area, because after that, then we can always come back and look at the other areas.
Yeah, it's going to be a running, yeah, this is
Right, so let's focus on that one area.
Yeah.
And come up with the numbers for that one area, and see what the septic capacity is in that one area, and then come get back to us so we can make, so we can figure out if we can do this or not.
Yeah. And I also think that one area, we're talking about phase one here on the Route twenty-five corridor, from Trumbull, I think it should be limited to kind of break off at the Purdy Hill Road area, rather than going up to Hattertown. I think that would allow for pending projects to come to fruition, and also give us a chance to, to see how it's working. And to take, you know, keeping into consideration the density and how the septic systems are going to work with this, and, you know, how it's received from the town, if, if we agree to do it at all.
Okay.
And this is going to change the town. This is going to change. This is Milford, Stratford. This is, it's going to change Monroe. If we do it big, it's going to change.
That's why if we do it at all, we need, I feel we need to do it on a very, very limited basis to begin with.
And the only reason the POCD says it's good?
Well, I actually agree, I actually agree with Rob, because when you look at the, when you look at the grand scope of things, and if you want to open it up to everyone, and we have a potential of five hundred units, and then you're going into Stevenson and probably have a potential of two hundred units there alone, and you've got seven hundred units across the town of Monroe, that's not where we want to be, I believe. I think if we start, if we start at a small number, be it fifty units, sixty, whatever that number is, I don't know the number, I'm just throwing numbers, because I'm not in the numbers business. But I, I think on a smaller scale, I think that's the way, I actually agree with Rob a hundred percent, a smaller scale, get a feel for it. We could always open it up. We may love it, we may hate it, we may, whatever, but definitely can, listen, we could open it up in ten phases. I don't care, but I think it should just be in a smaller scale.
And also, Rick, I have a question, Rick. At, at this point, has there been any research or concrete data that indicate that the town has a want or need for this change?
Well, absolutely. I, I'll get the, the marketing data.
Well, it's been in the POCD ten years ago, and it's probably going to be in a new one.
Okay, but, but the thing is
You're talking about marketing, yeah.
I do agree that it was in there, but also saw that fifty percent of the people that took the survey opposed it, you know, so I just want to make sure that we're taking that into consideration. I, I think what I read on there was that, you know, twenty-eight percent of the people that took the survey were in favor. So I just want to be mindful of that, you know, make sure that, that we have the consensus of the town, you know, that, that everybody's kind of on the same page with the majority at the very least.
And, and Rob, you bring up a good point. Francisco is now going to be tabulating the questionnaire. He's already talking about, you know, Francisco has been joining us at the subcommittee level, which has been very helpful. And he's going to be tabulating those figures. That will be very beneficial to
Hey, Rick, in the hills of Monroe, how big is that property? Do you? Or Will?
I don't know.
Does anybody know? Well, because the hills of Monroe, I, I, I just found out recently that they have a hundred and fifty units in there, that are like one bedroom and some two bedrooms, and thirty houses in the hills of Monroe. Is that true? Yeah, the houses are on the back of the property in the Right, and it's a hundred, and it's a hundred and fifty units there that I never realized that was there. Yeah, the, the place is enormous. Right. And then there's standalone houses in the back. I mean, the property's pretty big. I believe there, there's a, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and I probably am, but I believe there's another parcel that they could develop, I believe, but I, I don't know if it's there or if it's at, at the other one. Yeah, but they have a hundred and fifty units in there. Yeah, they're, yes, they're condos, not apartments. Right, they're one bedrooms, well, most of them. Hmm, some are one bedroom, yeah. Okay. And then they got the standalone houses in the very back of the property. Yeah, I believe there's thirty of them there, from what I understand. That sounds about right. It's something in that number. I think there's ten buildings, if I'm not mistaken. Maybe twelve?
All right, so we're hearing that we'd like to limit this phase one to the southern portion of Route twenty-five. It seems like that's what the majority of Commissioners would like to see.
Yeah. There's no timeframe, there's no timeframe on doing phase two or three or four or whatever we decide, correct?
Yeah, it's up to you. Yeah.
It doesn't have to be a timeframe. It doesn't have to be a timeframe, but it does leave it open to property owners in these other areas who may be interested.
Yeah, I mean, you can receive a petition, Bruno, you know, from an interested party.
Right, but if we limit it to a certain area, we don't ever have to go into another area if we don't want to.
That's correct.
That's the way I'd like it. Beautiful. Thank you.
Okay. Could somebody petition this? Did any other discussion on this matter, or else we'll bring a draft of the text amendment to our next meeting, so we can look at it, and that would be the next step before a public hearing?
Okay.
Okay.
Can you tell me the limit that you wanted? I heard the original proposal by, by Rick, and I heard a suggested change. Are we going with Rick or the suggested change?
I would like it going to Stephanie. I think that's a good zone.
Yeah, there already, there are already some apartments up there that are illegal. I mean, this would make them legal, so I mean, that's something else to consider.
I personally think it's too big of a parcel to start off with.
Anybody else?
Well, why don't we run those numbers, Rick? Can we do that?
Yeah, I got you.
I think that's the only way that, that we're going to know.
Yeah, you want, you want definitive numbers.
Well, I want definitive numbers from where, what, what, what Rob's talking about to Purdy Hill, and what you're talking about to fifty-nine. I need to know how much more there would be. So can we do that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, Rob, I under, I'm just, you know, it seems like it's me and you talking, but I, I understand the concern, but as Mike had mentioned, it, it, there are, I can think of a bunch of units right now that are on those, on that stretch that have apartments above the building, when they're, I guess, basically illegal or grandfathered in. Yeah, so it would be good to, I think it would be good to, you know, bring those in, and those are smaller, you know, this isn't a building. Some of those aren't, you know, ten apartments. It's one apartment above, you know, the, a restaurant or a garage, you know? So I'd like to see it stretched out a little bit. Purdy Hill, I, there's not a lot of property. There's not a lot of, I mean, you're looking at all the new stuff, and it's nice to try to bring in new development, but a big part of this is also taking the old developments that we have that are kind of derelict and just not, up to snuff, and using this as kind of an incentive. That's why I'd want it stretched a little bit more for the, the passage. If not, I feel like we're not going to get a full idea of what this could do. That's why.
Well, just Rick, you said twenty-five, you started this conversation, twenty-five to fifty-nine. Rick, you said 25, you started this conversation, 25 to 59 could potentially be 300 units by itself, correct?
No, no, 150.
300 for the whole corridor. 300 for all of 25.
Right, so that's what Condon's saying right now.
No.
Right?
Nope, just, I'm not all 25, just the 59. So it'd only be 150 units, max.
Alright, 25, you're talking all the way to the end of Monroe. I just thought you meant up to 59.
Until, until we get empirical data on this, on the, the health department, we don't know what it is.
Ron, we're talking about from Trumbull to 59 is 150 units. From 59 up is another 150.
And that's a rough answer.
So we're saying limit it to the first section of 25, so it's only 150.
Right, we really don't know that until we get the stuff back from the health department.
Yeah, 150 is, that's maximum number is 150.
Does that comprise the, the pre-existing non-conforming? Sorry, Rob. Does, does, do these numbers include the pre-existing non-conforming spaces or do they exclude those?
Yeah, I, I included those, Rob.
Okay.
I gotta say, there's something about that downtown part where Blockbuster used to be. If I, I go back that far, but I'm trying to imagine what that section would look like, the 150 apartments or potentially.
They wouldn't be right above that building, because our zoning, what we're looking at writing, I believe is only allowing.
50%.
Yeah, 50%. So you're not, it's not gonna be 150 right there for one unit. This is 150 spread out.
Full combined.
Within all the property. So, and again, right across from that is, you know, there's the restaurant that's right across. Uh, used to be, um, it's been a couple restaurants. There's an apartment, they have a for rent sign up and it's right above that restaurant, right across from Blockbuster. So I mean, it, it could very well look exactly like it looks, just.
With apartments above.
Yeah, well, again, there is an apartment there.
Where the cigar shop is, right?
Yeah, but they, you know, the, the Thai food restaurant has an apartment above it or in front of it.
Yeah, and tho- those are not, those are not pre-existing non-conforming, those are illegal.
Oh, I didn't wanna throw anyone under the bus.
There's also apartments at the, at the Valvoline, so I mean.
Exactly, yeah, so.
Just see what the public is gonna say.
Those are what we call illegal also.
And tha- and that's an important part, what you just said, Ron, like us moving forward with this right now. I know you guys, we've done a couple, you guys weren't here when we had the whole chicken thing. Um, but you know, the uh, we're gonna bring this forward and the big thing is the public hearing. Cause you know, yes, we could wait for a P O C D and see how that turns out, but we don't always get that luxury and we don't always have uh, the ability to, you know, put it out for a vote for the town. It's, it's when we get to do these uh, public hearings that people, concerned parties get to speak up. So hopefully, we can do that and see what uh, you know, the residents that are at least paying attention uh, think.
That's why I think limiting the size and scope is gonna be a gentler introduction on this. It'll have less of an effect, you know, and the, the public may not have such a um, opposing view on it.
Well, yeah, that, which is true. And, and um, we did talk to Francisco at the subcommittee meeting and he told us about the survey, right, Rick? That there was a need, that people thought there was a need for it?
Yeah, especially with the mixed use. The mixed use they like.
Right, so it did, out of the survey, he said there was, I don't know what the, what was the percentage, Rick?
Yeah, I, I can't remember offhand. I didn't write it down.
The other thing we have, the other thing we have to remember, I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the other thing we have to remember is that's 150, basically, if we're using that number, 150 maximum. That means every single available place is gonna, is gonna uh, fix their, fix their commercial building to, to collect their rent from one, two, three people. Generally, most of those guys are not. Right, and then they gotta fix their parking lots, they gotta fix, I mean, it, it's, it's very expensive to do and it may not be worth some of these people or some of those building owners to do. I mean, you know, that's just, I, I, you know, I know we wanna look at the, the negative side of everything all the time, but there, there's also a positive side to it. You know, not everybody's gonna do it. Some are. Um, I do agree with Rob. I think we should, we should bring it into a, on a small scale. Um, but you know, that 150 number is what everybody's gonna hear, but they're also not gonna hear that every single person that wants to do it's gonna have to spend thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars to get it done. And are they gonna get that back in rest, in rest? Some people just make, I feel it's, it's enough.
Positive side, if the only positive side is that not everybody's gonna do it, that's not really a positive. And then like Rob said, as far as the septics, is there any way we could say that if somebody's using a pre-existing septic, it needs to be tested and proved that it can withstand it?
Oh, it has to.
Well, first thing, first things first, it's not the only positive. I said it's a positive. It's definitely not the only positive.
Give me, give me two more.
Well, there.
More what?
Originally, Bill Porter had the idea that by allowing property owners to put apartments in these spaces, it would incentivize them to spruce up the older, tired-looking strip mowers. Um, that, that was the original idea. So that is another positive. I mean, we're not gonna get any more retail. We're not gonna fill out Bart's Center with retail anymore. I mean, it's just not gonna happen. So they're gonna stay the way they are unless we encourage something to happen.
And Ron, it attracts businesses in the sense that, you know, you're a small restaurant or a breakfast place that's looking to come in. Oh, well, you have 10 units above you that are, you know, gonna be filled with people that might want coffee or eggs in the morning. Like that's, that's a nice, that's the foot traffic that Monroe doesn't have. So it gives these small areas kind of foot traffic, which makes businesses that wouldn't necessarily come into Monroe right now because of the re- retail kind of scene and market, and this promotes that. That would be, that would be one benefit. I'm gonna echo it again, I said it last time. The other concern is, and we're working it in to allow a little bit of the affordable housing in these options. If we don't do it this way, we're gonna end up having to do it by 2022 in a much larger scope that is not gonna look good and it's not gonna be how we want it and we'll have a whole lot less control.
We won't have any control over that.
Exact, it's gonna be bad. It's gonna be exactly what your worst fear is.
Ryan, that's, that's, that's not.
My, my cup is half, my cup is half full when yours is half empty on that one. Um, I, I don't think it's gonna be our worst fear. I mean, my worst fear is dying.
I said, Ron, I said, I said Ron's worst fear.
You know, I mean. I, I'd fear more if I lost my dog than having, than having some of those things happen. Also, Ron, it also, it'll also allow that kid that just gets out of college to have a place to live in Monroe if they choose to be in Monroe. And also, when he, when he or she has the money to buy a home, they'll stay in town to buy a home. I mean, it, it does, it, it does allow for the younger students that just got out of college with, with other bills and stuff to, to stay in town in a safe town, good school, start to create and build a family here and, and, and move into, move into homes that are for sale. I mean, there are a lot of positives.
You know, guys, how many, how many people, do you guys remember when the uh, the diner years ago, the septic system was in failure?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it was in failure for years and they would pump it out manually with, with trucks. Would go to the diner every single morning and pump that system out. That system was in failure and they couldn't shut it down because they would have to shut down operations. It was uh, financially prohibitive for them to go in there and rip that whole system up. So eventually, they tried to put an illegal system in the property next door. They got caught, they got stopped, that didn't work. Um, they're pumping the system out every day. It was three, three, $400 a day to pump that system out. But the, the interesting thing was it never got pumped out when it rained. There were never septic trucks there when it rained at all. Is it, anybody realize why there was no septic trucks there when it rained?
No.
All the sewage was going into the, into the catch faces. It was all running right off into the river behind there. And there's no way that that, that owner was gonna pay trucks to come and pump that out to the $200, $300, $400 a day. And it went on for years and years and years. And when I'm bringing up these environmental implications, it's because I saw it firsthand. When I used to go to that diner, there would be sewage in the parking lot and nobody was doing anything about it. The diner ran for years and I just worry about some of these systems getting overtaxed and the, the landlords not doing anything about it. And, and, and realizing that it's a, you know, it's a watershed area and we do have to take that into consideration.
But Rob, my question to you is, won't they have to, won't they have to adjust their septic systems to, to comply to?
Yes, but when they fail, when they fail and they're all in their parking lots and everything else, you know, they're gonna be very difficult to fix. And I'm not saying that's a reason not to do it, but I definitely think it's something we need to take into consideration.
When they come in front of us, it's gonna be a new permit.
How many septic tanks in the town of Monroe are failing on, are failing?
Many, many, and there's many on 25 as we see.
Yeah, we have no, we have no way of knowing that. I'm talking about this years ago on the Conservation Commission. There's no rule in Monroe that you have to pump out your septic system every three years, every five years. You don't ever have to pump out your septic system, ever.
I'm in the septic business and I can't tell you how many people's homes I go to that their backyards are septic full.
Yeah.
Very expensive to fix.
Yeah, but is that because they didn't maintain them, Rob? Was it because?
Years ago, there was no regulation on having to have risers. Half the people didn't even know where their septic tanks were. And since I believe it's 92, now, you know, you have risers and people realize where their lids are and it really isn't, they don't wanna spend $300 on a pump, it's just half the time they didn't even know where they were, you know? And my house grown up, my father never knew and this system failed and when he had to put a new one in, you know, then we, we found out where the tank was. Um, so now that most systems are all brought up to surface, people are taking better care of them for sure.
Right.
Um, and then there's also better systems too, like the soil air system that the diner has now that are designed to be, you know, they're, they're much more advanced. And I realize that that's gonna be used on these parcels, which is great.
Right.
And those do have to be, you know, taking care of, cause you have air, you know, blowers and motors and, and flotation systems and everything else.
Right, right.
It's great technology and it does work, but it is, it is a legitimate concern and having that waterway back there, i- i- it, you know, it, it just has to make, make me think about it, you know, when these systems fail, what's gonna happen?
Well, it's like, you know, that's like true, but like some of these buildings that would, that would wanna put apartments in and maybe they would have to put a new system in and then we're gonna upgrade them anyway. Yeah, I mean, so it's, we can always look at it that way too, so.
Absolutely.
It also, it also might be, it also might be a deterrent. If they have to put in a new septic system because of their adding the apartments, they may just say, hey, I, I'm not gonna spend, I don't know what, again, Rob, you're in the septic business, not me and I don't know what they cost, so that extra 10, 15, 20, 30, 40, 50,000, I can't afford to. I, i- it's just not gonna make sense to me, to me. I don't know.
But that, you know, works against what we're trying to do here. You know, we're gonna try to approve something that may not happen, cause they're not gonna be able to afford to do it. So it's a little, that's a little mushy, you know?
Uh, uh, um, I'm confused on that one.
Well, you're, you're.
I mean, if it's approved, if it's, if it's approved, if it's approved and they can't afford it, I mean, I, I don't know, they can't do it then.
Or they do.
I drive off to go and there's plenty of houses that I wanna buy and I can't because I can't afford them. I don't get them.
But, but, but on your thing, if they wanna become legal, okay, then they're gonna have to do what it requires to become legal.
Exactly.
And once they come in front of the town, then we know that they're illegal and they're trying to become legal. So then we have a leg to stand on, cause we know they have illegal apartment. And it's a town required for them to put, it's so, it, it just, there's two ways to look at it. Either we're gonna let them upgrade their septic system or their septic system is good enough. Or we're gonna find out that they have illegal apartments there and they're gonna have to close them down. So on the other hand, it's even better for us too. So it, it works both ways.
Yeah, I agree, it's a positive.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we can, and we can make them do something, like make them have to change it and if they can't afford it, they can't do it, right?
Correct.
Absolutely.
Right, so that's good. There's your positive buddy.
But I mean, I don't know, I, I only said it 12 times. I don't know, I, I mean, I just don't know. I'm, I'm confused. I'm confused myself sometimes when I talk. But when you say it, Ron, then I understand what I'm talking about.
Hey, you got something there for it.
I think it's time for less Bruno talk and more Ron talk.
Time to go to.
Alright, so it sounds like the consensus is to go ahead with a phased approach and start in the um, Southern Route 25.
Yeah, I wanna.
Where to stop, but that's something we can talk about. We don't have to decide tonight.
I'll just throw something in there. I feel like, I feel like Rob does really wanna protect the Stepney Green. I get that. So maybe instead of going all the way to, to 59, we consider having it maybe go to Knollwood street, so it's stopping before you even get there and then that's our small thing. It gets the Valvoline, it gets that strip in, but it, it leaves the Stepney Green out of it for now. What do you think, Rob?
There's just really nothing that's a Stephanie Green that they can build on. Now, there's already apartments there, right? There's a house there.
There, there aren't.
Huh?
I really like that Thai food, so no. I don't know what you're talking about.
But I'm saying, there already is there and there's not much, because in between there, you got the big water wagon. So where are you gonna build all of that? That's all wetlands. And how much you got before you go to 59?
Attaboy, Ryan, attaboy, Ryan.
Got the green and you got the cemetery. I don't think anybody's moving into the cemetery.
So let's go upstairs. Knollwood and then, you know, that gives you a shorter zone.
And then I think you got the funeral home across the street. Right?
Yeah.
The old funeral home.
Sure.
I, I truly do not wanna live above the funeral home.
I'm up for the quiet neighbors.
Rick, come up with the numbers for both. Stop at a Purdy Hill and stop at a 59.
Yeah.
Okay, will do. Alright.
Oh, we talked about Knollwood. Why do you keep changing your mind here?
Cause I, I, again, I just wanna see some of the.
Run a number for every street in Monroe.
Just Knollwood. Let's do it up to there. So at least we get some of these existing buildings that need to kind of be brought up to snuff.
Yeah, do it, do it up to Knollwood too. I agree. So we can at least see the numbers.
Send all day Friday, running numbers on per street.
Alright, let's uh, move along.
Hi, Mikey. Let's move along.
Yep, let's move along.
Alright, let's move along to number 11, correspondence. I think we have none. And then number 12, commission reports. Chairman's report, I have none. Do any of the commissioners have anything to report?
No.
If not, let's go to um, uh, the land use staff reports, Rick and Will. But I think Rick takes.
Francisco is ready to tabulate the questionnaire. So he's working on that and uh, I don't know what to say about the townwide uh, meeting, you know, to hold. So that's a big if, everyone. That's what's next. So we gotta figure that out.
We, we have to figure how we're gonna do that. Cause we can't have, we can't have everybody at school, we can't have an outdoor event. We gotta figure out how we're gonna do that. Francisco's gonna have to come up with something.
Yeah, he'll, he'll join your next meeting.
Okay.
Alright, good. Then um, we're ready for, are we ready for a meeting adjournment?
Motion to adjourn. Rapidly.
Second.
Uh, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Sweet dreams, everybody.
Yeah, good night.
Happy Labor Day. Happy, uh, Labor Day.
You guys Tuesday.